I also believe that, I also believe that we have to take a hard look at how to create homeownership opportunities in this process. The tenants absolutely need greater assistance to turn their relocation money into an opportunity to buy the condo that they now live in, and I believe that we can do a lot more in that score.
Declaring that we are in a cycle, District 5 Councilmember Jack Weiss says this ordinance is an attempt to achieve a balance and may not be a perfect solution.
It is more clear to me than ever that this is a situation where both sides that have come to the table have made very, very strong points. I think the tenants' rights proponents in particular have made very clear that as the economy in Los Angeles has churned, tenants have gotten burned. And at the same time, I think we've had it presented very clearly from the landlord community that there is concern, understandable concern, in the Los Angeles economy that this council not act in a way that could have unpredictable, unforeseen, and unfortunate economic consequences. Because after all, we are dealing with a situation where, as I know Mr. Wesson will remember, as Ms. Gruel will remember, as Mr. Reyes will remember, from a hearing that we had in Council District 2 at Valley College, where we had a presentation from a UCLA professor, an economist, and he made very clear to us that we are in a cycle. This is a cyclical thing in the economy. Here's where it started, here's how it may end, but there's no way of predicting how long the cycle lasts and what will happen next. And his advice was to us, act cautiously when you're dealing with this type of situation. I think, colleagues, what Mr. Wesson has endeavored to do is draw a line of balance. That is how I perceive his proposal in its entirety. It is an effort to try to come up with a balance, with a reasoned solution that does not give either side everything it wants, but tries to act in a way that immediately or as quickly as possible provides tenants with enhanced relocation assistance, and at the same time does not do anything that would have an unforeseen or unfortunate effect or certainly unintended effect on the local economy. It may not be a perfect solution, and I have heard him say more times than I've ever heard anyone say that he will be the first among us to repeal any aspect of it after a very short period of time if it is shown to be a bad idea, or if the facts on the ground bear that out.
Saying this is a very serious matter, District 6 Councilmember Tony Cardenas agrees this is not a perfect solution and probably will not be the final answer.
What you're watching here is sausage in the making. If you've ever watched sausage being made, you probably would never eat it again. It's not pretty. It's not pretty, but it's something that is part of what happens. What Councilmember Wesson has done, and I want to thank him for doing this, he has taken an issue at the level of the electeds in the city of Los Angeles, not appointed officials, not bureaucrats, but the electeds, and said, "We need to craft a solution." And he admitted, he has admitted that this solution is not perfect. He has also admitted and committed that over the coming months and over the next year, we will very likely hear more from the public, we will make changes, and we will have something different that was being contemplated for approval today. And with all due respect to the Appointed Planning Commission, this is the constitutional United States democratic system in which this should be decided. Because we, as elected officials, however we vote, are going to be talked about badly either with renters and/or property owners, developers, no matter what. No matter what, people are going to try to tarnish who we are as elected officials. This is a very serious matter, and I agree with everyone that this is not a perfect solution, but I commend my colleague Herb Wesson, who has already let us know, this is 99.9% chance that this is not the final solution. But people are being evicted as we speak today. People are getting their notices as we speak today, and there are some people who deserve more compensation than what we have today, so that's why I am willing to vote for this today, because I'm not getting evicted today, but someone, citizen or not, senior or disabled, single with children, is getting evicted today, and they deserve better than what the city of Los Angeles has today, and they deserve better. They also deserve better than what we are actually hopefully going to approve today or next week. They do deserve better. But the only way that we're going to get there is if we force ourselves to reckon with this in a timely manner, because this has been talked about for decades. And I can promise you this, this will have a much more final and better solution in the next 12 months.
All right. Any other questions, colleagues? As amended, we have this before us. Please open the roll.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'm sorry, just for clarification, council's voting on all of those six, 6A, 6B, and then 19 and 19A as amended.
Correct. The entire package. Okay? Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. And we'll send that forth, if there's no objection, we'll send that forthwith to the mayor.
As you saw, the new relocation fees received unanimous support from council members, which means it'll take effect immediately with the expected signature of the mayor. Now, the ordinance will provide $6,810 to tenants who have lived in their apartments less than three years, or $14,850 for those older, disabled, or with minor children. $9,040 to tenants who have lived in their apartments more than three years, or $17,080 for those older, disabled, or with minor children. $9,040 to tenants whose income is 80% of the area's median income or less. Median income in this area for a family of four would be $55,450. And $17,080 for those older, disabled, or with minor children. This means testing will be discontinued July 1, 2008, if council chooses not to extend it. There would also be fees of up to $2,300 per unit, which developers and owners would have to pay to the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Continue to watch Council Week in Review for updates on hall housing issues that come through your Los Angeles City Council. Council Week in Review is seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m., Saturday and Sunday at 9:30 a.m. L.A. City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at (213) 473-3978. And if you'd like to obtain a copy of an audio or videotape of a council or committee meeting, your request may be made in person at Room 395 in City Hall, or by calling (213) 978-1046. Or, of course, by dialing 311, your one call to City Hall. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending April 13, 2007. On behalf of Tony Ighani and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Pogue-Joy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Did you know that it is your responsibility to be prepared for disasters? Southern California continues to be at risk for earthquakes, flash floods...
My daddy's in there!
Back away now!
Wildfires, terrorist activities, and other hazards. Disasters can strike at any time. Learn how to protect your property, prepare your neighborhood, and most importantly, know how to survive a disaster. You can do this by participating in the City of Los Angeles Neighborhood Preparedness Ambassador Program. This course is offered free of charge for Los Angeles city residents. For more information, visit www.lacity.org/epd. Remember, emergency preparedness, it's an L.A. thing.
Moving is who we are, inside and out. We breathe in so that we can breathe out, so that we can breathe in again. We dream, awake and asleep. We laugh. We talk with our hands. We give it a whirl. We become. We move, our bodies and minds, in constant conversation. And no matter how much we do it, it's never enough. We know this to the core, that as long as we are breathing, there is moving to be done. Multiple sclerosis stops people from moving. People with MS understand something about moving that is hard for most of us to comprehend, that moving is not a guarantee.
MS is a disease that damages myelin, the protective tissue that surrounds the nerve fibers of the brain and spinal cord. When a person has MS, myelin is lost, and that leaves behind scar tissue called sclerosis.
The scar tissue disrupts the electrical impulses that move information from the brain to the body and makes movement difficult.
No one knows what causes MS, and there is no cure. The effects of MS are unpredictable and show up in different ways in different people. One person may experience memory loss and fatigue, while another may suddenly lose the ability to see.
Someone might lose their balance and have trouble walking, while another may have slurred speech and tremors.
For some, the symptoms of MS come and go; in others, they last forever.
The National Multiple Sclerosis Society is a collective of passionate individuals united by a common goal, to address the challenges of each person whose life is affected by The National MS Society leads these initiatives because we believe that moving is not just something you can or can't do, but rather is who you are, that if you are alive, you are connected to the potential, the hope, the momentum of it all. You move, along with because of and in spite of, the great big turning world.
Please join us on Wednesday, April 18, at 5:00 p.m. for the annual State of the City address given by Mayor Antonio Villarogosa exclusively on L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
L.A. City View, Channel 35.
April 18, 2007. We are here in council chambers, John Farrar Memorial Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday of the week, and we welcome our Channel 35 television viewers, and we also welcome our viewers from the Internet as well. We are broadcast live on both mediums, both on Channel 35 through the city's cable system and rebroadcast in the evening. We're also available online through the city's homepage at www.lacity.org, where you can click to the links that support our live webcast video. We're also available through your telephone if you call (213) 621-CITY. The council phone service allows you to dial into that menu and listen to the meetings of the full city council or any of our committee meetings as well. Each council meeting is run according to an agenda, which we post 72 hours in advance, special items 24 hours in advance. That's also available online at www.lacity.org, and there are copies of the agendas here in council chambers and with the city clerk's office. We usually have local high school students who are council ambassadors who can help you navigate the ins and outs of a council meeting, but there are a couple items I'll bring you to your attention. One is that you can testify on any items that have been posted for a public hearing, all items that we consider receiving their public hearing in committee, or if it hasn't been done in committee, here in council. So if you'd like to be heard on that item, please fill out a speaker card in the back and give that to one of the sergeants-at-arms by the sides here. You can also testify from Van Nuys, City Hall, if that's closer to where you live, and that is also a place where we go the first Friday of the month for our meetings and our efforts to bring city council closer to all Angelinos. Secondly, you can also testify for general public comment, which is for items that are under our jurisdiction, that are not on the agenda, but that are nevertheless under our, sorry, that are under our jurisdiction but are nevertheless not formally on the agenda. And we invite people to testify from Van Nuys for general public comment as well. We require 10 members or two-thirds of our body to constitute a quorum and to begin business. Pursuant to our own council rules, all members should be in their seats at 10 a.m. We are past that hour, and I'd like to thank the council members who are here on time. Thank you to Councilmember Alakon, Gruel, Lavange, Smith. That leaves us with five members, awaiting five more. I'd like to ask if the following council members will please join us as soon as possible pursuant to our own council rules. Councilmember Cardenas, we're waiting you in council. Councilmember Han, we're waiting your presence. Councilmember Weezer, we are waiting your presence as well to begin the meeting. Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Wesson. We are expecting Councilmembers Zine and Perry, but they are excused to arrive later. So again, please, Councilmember Cardenas, Han, Weezer, Parks, Reyes, Rosendahl, Weiss, and Wesson, please join us as soon as possible. I appreciate our viewing audience and our audience here in council chambers' patience as we await those council members to join us. Thank you. We are still awaiting five more of the remaining eight members who are expected to be here on time. Councilmember Cardenas, if you please make your way down as soon as possible. Councilmember Han, if you will join us. Councilmember Weezer, please come down. Councilmember Parks, please join us. Councilmember Reyes, please come to council chambers. Councilmember Rosendahl, please join us. Councilmember Weiss, if you can join us as well. Councilmember Wesson. Thank you, Mr. Parks. That gives us six members. We are waiting four more to begin. Thank you. We are now up to seven members, still awaiting three more. Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Han, Councilmember Weezer, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Wesson. We are waiting your presence to begin our meeting. This is a final quorum call for Councilmembers Cardenas, Han, Weezer, and Wesson. I'm sorry, but Ms. Han is here. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alakon, Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weezer, Lavange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum is present.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Han moves, and Mr. Smith seconds without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Alakon moves, and Mr. Parks seconds without objection. Those two will be approved. Next order of business.
Mr. President, do you wish to take public comment at this time?
Yes, now is time for general public comment. We have one public comment card from Arnold Sachs. If you'd like to come forward, Mr. Sachs. This is general public comment for items that are not on the agenda today but are nevertheless under our jurisdiction. Good morning.
Very quickly, with in light of some of the news in the L.A. Times regarding the DWP, again, I would request maybe that the mayor hold back on his attempt to regulate the, get in line with the school board and try to do something about regulating and bring the DWP under control before it bankrupts the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sachs. That closes our general public comment. Mr. Clerk, if we, oh, we have one more card. If that person could come forward who just filled out the card, I'll get it momentarily. Mr. Johnson, welcome.
My name is Oscar Johnson. As an assistant in Los Angeles, I've run across so many people in administrative position having the administration the wrong way. And as I walk down on 7th Street between 7th and Broadway, we have something from the Los Angeles Fire Department called a testing center. It's a truck, and it's got a, and the hose extends from the truck from the crosswalk into the building. Then I asked the gentleman who operated the fire truck, how long would they, you know, would it be in the, in the public way on the sidewalk? He tell me, "We're gonna be there as long as we, as long as we like." And then I wanted, then last Thursday about 2 o'clock, I went to the district attorney office to make a complaint, only looking for a telephone number, and I was escorted out the district attorney office, about four or five people with guns drawn on me almost, and put me on the elevator from the 17th floor, escorted...
And nobody wishing to call that special? Let's go ahead and open the roll on that item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you. That assessment is approved for the improvement and maintenance of the lighting district. Next item, please.
Item 2 is a public convenience or necessity item in Council District 1, notice for public hearing. A motion is required to grant or deny the application.
Okay. Council District 1 is supportive of that item?
Mr. President, there are no findings that would have to be made by Mr. Reyes.
Okay. We'll hold that on the -- Mr. Reyes, we have Item Number 2, the public convenience or necessity, and it requires a motion in your district for alcohol sales at West 8th Street. Do you want to hold that on the desk, or you want to move it? Can you move it? Okay. Mr. Reyes moves that. I'll second that. There's no objection. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 3 is also a public convenience or necessity item in Council District 14, notice for public hearing, and the recommendation is to grant the application.
Okay. Mr. Wizar, Item Number 3 in Council District 14, we have before us. I assume there's no objection to that, so we'll have that moved. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That's approved. Next items, please.
Items 4 through 29 are items which public hearings have been held. Items 4 through 7 are commission appointments. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, let's hold that on the desk, please.
And I believe there's a request on behalf of Mr. Zine to call Item 8 special.
Okay. We will hold that for Mr. Zine, Item Number 8. Other specials, colleagues?
Item -- I know both Mr. Parks and I have Item 11.
11? Parks and Gruel?
Do we have Number 25, and then move both reports on 29?
Okay. And Mr. Alakon wanted to call that special as well, and then move both reports on 29. I'll second that.
25 and 11.
Any other specials? Seeing none? Let's go ahead and open the roll on the balance, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 30 through 58 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay. On those items, we will open and close the public hearings. Do not have any cards for those. Colleagues, any specials? Items 30 through 58. Mr. Parks?
52.
48 and 52 for Mr. Parks. Mr. Reyes?
Number 57 for Councilmember Weiss.
Okay. 57 for Mr. Weiss. Any other specials, colleagues? Yes, Mr. Smith?
47.
47 for Mr. Smith. And seeing no other special items, public hearings having been held -- oh, sorry, Ms. Han? 43 for Ms. Han. Last call for any specials? Seeing none on the balance. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 59 through 61 are the closed session items. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please. Without objection, we'll hold the closed items on the desk. Next item?
On the continuation agenda, Item 64 is a commission appointment. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, let's hold that with the other commission nominees. And if we can call the roll for a special meeting, please.
Alakon, Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Wizar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 12 members present and a quorumist president.
Okay. First order of business, please.
Item 62 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call 62 special? Yes, Mr. Parks? And next item?
Item 63 is an item which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration, and there may be a substitute motion circulated later.
Okay. Mr. Labange, do you want to keep 63 on the desk until we have a motion? Mr. Labange? On Item 63 in your district, there's rumor of a amending motion. Do you want to call it special while we're waiting? Do you want to go ahead with it? Okay. All right. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay. Well, we'll go forth with pending --
Substitute motion on that?
Has that been circulated?
Yeah.
Okay.
I apologize, Mr. Clerk. Hold it.
So we will -- let's reconsider that and call it special.
My fault.
Open the roll on reconsideration.
Got it.
Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay. We'll call 63 special. If we can continue those both into the regular meeting and go back to the regular meeting now. And we will begin with commissioners.
The first appointment, Item Number 4, is Ms. Helen Han to the Commission on the Status of Women, and two votes are required on this item, Mr. President.
Okay. Ms. Han, if you'd like to come forward.
Ms. Han?
We welcome your interest and desire to serve the people of Los Angeles through the Commission on the Status of Women. And I know Mr. Zine is on his way here from the airport, and that came through the Personnel Committee. But in the meantime, I wanted to thank you for putting yourself forward and see if you had any comment to make before the council at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and the members of the City Council. It is truly an honor for me to be here this morning, and I thank you for the opportunity to address the council members on serving on the Commission on the Status of Women. This appointment is very meaningful for me, as someone who comes from a family with four daughters, as someone who comes from a culture who has traditionally been limiting women from the Asian culture, and as the CEO of the National Association of Women Business Owners, I represent the interests and the concerns of women entrepreneurs who represent 335,000 businesses in the Los Angeles and Long Beach arena. So as the fastest-growing segment of the economy, women entrepreneurs represent about 43% of all privately-owned firms, and we generate more than $313 billion in revenues and employ more than 700,000 people. And at NABO L.A., we operate under the principle that it is really our responsibility as individuals to own the future. And the concept of owning the future for us is way more than just owning our businesses. Instead, it speaks powerfully to the expansion of the notion that we have individual responsibility in the community, that it is a shared responsibility for taking ownership for a future together. And when we look at the history of women and the status of women today, we cannot help but recognize that we've come a long way. But at the same time, it is also important to recognize that there is so much more to be done. And we have a responsibility, I believe, to live up to the challenges and the things that we need to look at in terms of how women live and work in this country. And we need to raise our voice, wield our influence, and leverage our profile to change the culture in which we operate, expanding our definition of self-interest beyond the walls of our own individual houses and businesses, so that it embraces the larger question of who we are as a society. So as someone who is truly committed to increasing and expanding the status of women socially, economically, and politically, I am happy to contribute my time and my resources to serve the city and the Commission on the Status of Women. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for your service, both in this capacity and with your professional life as well. We appreciate that. We have two speakers in the council who would like to add their good wishes and perhaps ask some questions as well, Ms. Gruel and Mr. Rosendahl. Ms. Gruel?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Helen, for your willingness to serve on the Commission. It's a critically important commission in the city of Los Angeles. When you look at the issues that affect women, when you look at the issues that are challenges, I guess you'd say, in our police department and fire department on the hiring of women, when you look at the domestic violence issues, I think that the role the commission can play is really critical. I think your experience at NABO and the issues that are important to women-owned businesses and how we can, as a city, be more business-friendly, again, particularly to some of the minority in women-owned businesses here in Los Angeles. So I appreciate your willingness, wholeheartedly support your nomination, and look forward to you coming back and telling us about public policy issues, legislative issues that we can get involved in to help the commission and to support the commission. It's really a powerhouse group of women. I've had a chance to meet with a couple of them recently, and are also with your executive director, general manager, Paula Petrotta. This is a critical piece of the city. We don't talk about it enough, and so I hope that you'll come back and be with us on ways in which we can change things in the Los Angeles that can improve the lives of women. So thank you for your willingness. I don't have any tough questions for you. I've asked that to you already. So thank you very much, Mr. President, and I wholeheartedly support your nomination.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Mr. President, indeed. I will be supporting you as well. I really appreciated your comments about the culture and the background and where women need to be, which is equal with men on everything. I'm looking forward to a woman president and a woman mayor and a woman governor here in California, too, as time goes on. So I appreciate that kind of energy. The question I have for you has to do with the seniors. We're not doing enough for our seniors in this city, and senior women, frankly, outlive men. But the whole concept of mothers with children, we're focused on, we're focused on youth, we're focused on schools, but we're not focused on our seniors. And the women seniors is a class that is extraordinarily large and growing, and of course, the men, too. So where do you think we can go as a city in providing more services, more support, and a plan for seniors?
I think empowerment comes from participation and engagement. And, you know, I was at a conference where Sherry Lansing talked about the issue of ageism and where the baby boomers are in terms of the resources they can bring and the participation in the community that they can contribute to. And a lot of the times, it's the seniors that do have the resources and the time to commit their passion into what they believe in. And I think we have to change the culture in terms of how we can continue to embrace the knowledge base and the commitment of people regardless of their age. And especially with women, when it comes to business ownership, there is no expiration. So we have a lot of women who are self-owned businesses, who continue to participate in the fabric of the economic community. So I think that we can, as a city, do many, many things to serve and empower women into continuing to provide service.
I look forward to your leadership on the commission. And, you know, we have a Department of Aging. We're going through a budget process now. And I would encourage you and your commission to take a look at the Department of Aging, just because your commission really should be looking at the entire city and all of its aspects. And look at the Department of Aging and come up with ideas that, in the budget process, we can implement. Because last year, my colleague Greg Smith and I and others, we proposed some $300,000 for them to do a study of the next 10 years, and they did nothing. The money was swept back into the general fund. I don't want another year to go by, and I need your leadership on it. Thank you for stepping up.
Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. That's our last speaker from the council. So with that, Madam Clerk, if you'll please open the roll on the nomination, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Congratulations, Commissioner. Welcome aboard.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Smith?
As Number 29 go forthwith?
Sure. There's no objection.
I remove --
29 forthwith, sorry.
And I remove my request on Number 47.
Okay. It's been requested, so let's go ahead. We can vote on 47. Madam Clerk, if we can open the roll on that, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. If we can move to the next commissioner, please.
Mr. President, the next one's Items 5 through 7, or appointments to the Los Angeles Convention and Exhibition Center authority.
And ask all of our nominees to step forward, and I'd like to recognize the chair of our Trade, Commerce, and Tourism Committee, Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. All three of these appointments have to do with our convention and Exhibition Center authority, which is the authority that oversees buildings and financing and our debt. So I think it would be interesting for all of our colleagues to maybe hear from each of you, because you all actually have very interesting backgrounds. You have very interesting experience and perspective that I think you bring to this commission. So maybe all three of you could talk about how you think your background, what it brings to this authority, and then maybe each of you could talk about what you would like to focus on in terms of the authority. I think that would be interesting for all of us to hear. So why don't you start?
Good morning. My name is Monica Torre. I come with 11 years of radio and marketing background, and that's what I definitely hope to bring with the expansion with the L.A. Live project. Definitely, the L.A. Convention Center is creating that ultimate experience for the residents of Los Angeles and those that are visiting. In addition, I support the fact that with the growth of the Convention Center, that it does create jobs. Economically, it benefits the city of Los Angeles, and with the emergency systems that are in place after meeting with Mr. Hill, the L.A. Convention Center is definitely creating an experience for everyone, residents and visitors.
Thank you. Hi. Thank you very much for this opportunity, Councilmember Han, to address the City Council. I believe, being here as a resident of four decades now, under Councilmember First Cunningham, to, I believe, the next successor was -- help me here.
Nate Holden. Uh, Holden. And then -- We won't tell him that we forgot.
And then also Martin Ludlow, and now Councilmember Wesson. I believe the city is going through a renaissance with this mayor, because I'm seeing a very high convergence of good spirits from this council and the mayor, where you're bringing -- I think you're opening up the closed circuits of in-groups to now a wider circle to all of the citizens and converging all of our interests. I have a background in quality, and my background is I've always believed in building houses of quality wherever I go. And I built it in government service, collaborating government, industry, academics, and quality professionals. They said it could not be done, but I believe government should be the leaders of the higher public common good. I also believe that building houses of quality can also be done in the community if you stand for civil rights, leadership development, higher education, curriculum reform, and also nonprofit development. In the Convention Center, I found my House of Quality principle embodied, activated, and animated in all four or five or six engines. I think it's a very vibrant organization. I feel like I've gone home. I don't want to be dead yet, although this is the anniversary of my father, who lost five members of his family to the Japanese Imperial Army during World War II. So I credit him for the principle that he has given me, that education is a solid currency that is not devalued or inflated, but it stays solid within your core. And I thank Council President Eric Garcetti for how he has taken care of our community, and he's much revered in our community because of how he has taken care of our veterans. So -- and I want to thank all of the council members here who are working with this mayor, who are making this renaissance happen for this city. What I'm going to do for the city council, the city convention, is bring all my resources into that convention. I'm like a walking billboard. They call me Procy.com. So whatever connections I have, I will connect it to the L.A. Convention, and I'm very, very happy with this appointment. This is my second appointment. The first one was a baptism of fire under the Civil Service Commission. They said it could not be done, but I believe government should be the leaders of the higher public common good. I also believe that building houses of quality can also be done in the community if you stand for civil rights, leadership development, higher education, curriculum reform, and also nonprofit development. In the Convention Center, I found my house of quality principle embodied, activated, and animated in all four or five or six engines. I think it's a very vibrant organization. I feel like I've gone home. I don't want to be dead yet, although this is the anniversary of my father, who lost five members of his family to the Japanese Imperial Army during World War II. So I credit him for the principle that he has given me, that education is a solid currency that is not devalued or inflated, but it stays solid within your core. And I thank Council President Eric Garcetti for how he has taken care of our community, and he's much revered in our community because of how he has taken care of our veterans. And I want to thank all of the councilmembers here who are working with this mayor, who are making this renaissance happen for this city. What I'm going to do for the City Council, the City Convention, is bring all my resources into that convention. I'm like a walking billboard. They call me Procy.com. So whatever connections I have, I will connect it to the L.A. Convention, and I'm very, very happy with this appointment. This is my second appointment. The first one was a baptism of fire under the Civil Service Commission.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. President, councilmembers. My name is Carlos Alfaro, and I'm a resident of Los Angeles, an entrepreneur. My brother and I own a business that has been established now for 10 years. Over the last several years, I've had the opportunity to serve on several business organizations, as well as the Quality and Productivity Commission of the city of Los Angeles. It's an exciting time for the city of L.A. in my perspective. There's a lot of development, a lot of changes that are taking place, both economically and demographically. I came as an immigrant to this country in 1982. And over the years, my brother and I established a business. We've had an opportunity to succeed, and I enjoy giving back and volunteering in the community. So one of the things I hope to bring to the Commission is an entrepreneurial perspective, is looking at the opportunities. The L.A. Convention Center is a vital and strategic role towards enhancing and positioning the city of L.A. in a global perspective, in a global economy. So what I hope to contribute is my input from the private sector and relationships that I've established over the years in the business community. Thank you for your consideration.
Well, thank you very much. I think we have all been very much impressed by your statements and by your background. I have a sense with our new general manager of the Convention Center, the commissioners that the mayor has appointed, I believe we're going to have a renaissance of our Convention Center and our refocusing on how important bringing tourists to Los Angeles is and how much that really does impact our general fund. And you should all know that my colleague Bill Rosendahl and I are pursuing the idea of building a mini-conference center over by LAX. And we will expect this authority to take a good look at that in terms of how to finance that and how that might enhance the Convention Center. And as the new general manager, Mr. Abasi, is saying, it's really about growing up mini conventions that we're right now losing to, you know, Burbank, Glendale, Long Beach, and actually growing them up here in Los Angeles. So the next logical place for them to book a convention would be at our large Convention Center. So we're going to ask you to take a good look at that and see how you can help us achieve that goal for the LAX area and for the hotels that border the corridor there. So congratulations. I support all three of you wholeheartedly. I think you're bringing a fascinating perspective to this authority.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, there's not much more to say with our great Chair and what she just went through with the questions here, but I had the pleasure of meeting the three of you before the committee. We went through a lot of questions about your backgrounds and your qualifications. And indeed, as I said then, Mayor Villarosa has been doing a brilliant job in appointing people to commissions. It's not political payoff, it's not big contributors, it's people who have professional capability and the diversity. And the three of you just exhibited to the City Council and to the people watching this that you are truly committed to making the city a better place. And we look forward to your leadership, the three of you, on that commission. And as Ms. Hahn said, we're in the black now there at the Convention Center. We want to keep that getting better and better, and we do want a conference center over near LAX, because as we go forward with that corridor there on Century Boulevard, it will become a destination point. So we look forward to your leadership as well. Congratulations for stepping forward. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Labange is our next speaker, to be followed by Mr. Reyes. Mr. Labange.
I just got an opportunity to greet these fine new commissioners for Mayor Villarosa in the city of Los Angeles. I just want to thank you. Just make Los Angeles right, as you could do, and I appreciate that. And if I could, Mr. President and Commissioners, just real quick, just salute the Valley leadership that's down here for Valley Leadership Training today, John Burry from Greg Smith's office, Alice Roth, Terry Davis, and all the group there. Give them a welcome to City Hall, if I could, right there. Valley leadership and the Convention Center, to go full circle, don't forget the Valley when you think about the Convention Center. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I also want to say thanks to our volunteers and new commissioners, but I did have one question regarding this effort. The city's been putting together a comprehensive approach in dealing with gangs. And what we've learned in our hearings, and most of us who grew up in these neighborhoods already realize it, that with jobs you can allow for an environment where young people will have a sense of self-esteem and no need to join a gang. So my question to you is, as commissioners, you will be in a position to look at various agreements, contracts. Would you find it as part of your priority to stimulate that discussion in terms of how many jobs we can create for our youth in this city? Is there a way to challenge and look at decisions made by the department and/or agency reps and break down that question as to how many jobs are created? Is that something you're willing to do in your process?
I mean, it's always been my principle to look at how we're...
Can you move the microphone closer?
I'm sorry. It's always been my principle to look at the effect of our actions on the youth, because I always view the youth as our potential leaders. And if we're not treating our youth, you know, very effectively, and we're not showing a good example to them, then we're also growing ineffective leaders. But if we have that kind of paradigm and we're seeing how our particular decisions are affecting the potential leaders of this city, then I believe we will always make the right decisions for them.
In your orientation and/or preview of your role as commissioners, was there any mention as to your discretion and/or decision-making when it comes to contracts or allowing for the creation of jobs or prioritizing youth? Has that come up yet?
Absolutely. It was something that was mentioned with regards to the economic impact that the convention has, the jobs that it creates, as well as the educational services that it provides throughout the year. I grew up in the city of Los Angeles, and I grew up in some of the areas where it was gang-infested, and, you know, I come from those neighborhoods. So I completely agree with you, and our position is being able to find ways to be able to connect with those communities. If the communities in L.A. are safer, is able to attract more tourism, is able to attract better housing, is able to attract more business, more commerce. So the Convention Center is in a key place in downtown where it impacts a lot of the Pico Union, the Figueroa Sector. And in our view, or at least in my role, is looking at how we could leverage all of those resources around that area to have a positive impact on those issues that the city is trying to tackle.
Could I highly suggest or recommend that perhaps, as commissioners, you could request the department to highlight for you how many jobs are actually being created for youth, and perhaps start comparing year to year, what is the real progress?
Yes.
And to really put them to the test to prove that beyond a public relations effort, that we should start creating the infrastructure to train and create access for jobs at a job economic generator like the Convention Center. If that's something you could highlight, I'd love to see that in your annual reports.
Sure.
But as commissioners, you have the discretion to direct the personnel to define that for you and actually demonstrate their accountability to that goal in creating jobs for young people.
And as of right now, the L.A. Convention Center, it does generate at least 12,000 or more jobs per year, and some of those employees are full-time, part-time, and contracted. So 12,000 jobs or more are being generated from the Convention Center.
That's great.
I think Councilmember Reyes, I have never met an organization whose top, middle, you know, and down, I would say, are all coordinated. And you have a very good leadership in Puria, Abasi, and Philip Hill, who not only, I believe, have 21st century leadership principles, but are very, very sincere in how they serve the city. I have not seen a disconnect between their talk and their actions and in the way they treat their staff. And this is a very short period of time that I have engaged with them. So I believe what you're asking for is already something they've thought about, or if already, they're already implementing it. And all I need to do is make sure that that was just done. But I really believe in this team, that they're running an awful sets of cylinders and engine.
And believe me, I applaud their performance, their quality, their professionalism, and that I am sure of. But I also want to make certain that we see it in black and white, in writing.
Yes.
What is the actual result of that great effort when it comes to creating jobs for our youth, so that we can start chipping away at this real challenge, this debacle that's occurring in our streets that we know as gangs? So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes, and I want to thank our Commissioner nominees for their great responses and kind words as well. And with that, we will open the roll on all three nominations. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Congratulations, and thank you again for your service. Please give a round of applause to our commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. We have one more Commissioner.
Mr. President, item sixty...
Oh, I'm sorry. And just before that, I want to recognize Controller Laura Chick, who is here with some of her counterparts from throughout the state, and we want to welcome them to City Council chambers in Los Angeles. So with that, we'll recognize Laura Chick for a quick introduction. If her guests want to join her, why don't you go over there to the podium, make sure folks can see you.
I'm sorry. Hello, Mr. President and councilmembers. I couldn't resist saying to the new commissioners you disappointed, that they need to go on my website and read my audits of the Convention Center and the Convention Bureau and make sure that they've implemented all my audit recommendations. So I'm here for a very quick but special reason. In doing a little research and asking questions, I discovered that in the entire state of California, councilmembers, there are only four elected auditors. Your city controller is one of the four: Los Angeles, Long Beach, Oakland, Berkeley. Guess what? Come on. Look at us. Okay?
Yay!
Thank you. So you are not the only one suffering, Long Beach, Berkeley, and Oakland. No, I think having an elected auditor is the only way to have transparency and accountability and good government. But I just wanted to bring these three dynamo auditors. And by the way, what they are that I'm not, is they are all professional, trained auditors. You know, the charter does not require that for us. And I invited them here. We're having an idea-sharing meeting today to see what I can learn from them and vice versa. So on my far right, the city of Long Beach auditor Laura Dowd, another Laura, who was elected in July of 2006, so it hasn't been quite a year. Anne Marie Hogan, oh, I'm sorry. Anne Marie Hogan to my left, from Berkeley, and she is the veteran since December of 1994. And now immediately to my right, the newest, Courtney Ruby of Oakland, November 2006. So I wanted you all to meet them, and we're going to go roll our sleeves up and learn from each other. Thank you, councilmembers.
Thank you. We welcome you here, and it's a wonderful introduction. And thank you so much, Controller Chick, for joining us and for all of the auditors that have joined her as well. Enjoy your time here in Los Angeles. Though Long Beach isn't very far away, so I'm sure you enjoy L.A. all the time. With that, we have one more Commissioner. It's item 64. Is that nominee here?
That is the appointment of Ms. Suzanne Manriquez to the Quality and Productivity Commission.
Ms. Manriquez? Welcome. And this came out of our Audits and Government Efficiency Committee. But if you'd like to give a statement, and thank you, I think a number of us are familiar with your great work, but why don't you let us know your interest in serving and thank you for putting yourself forward.
Thank you, President Garcetti. First of all, I want to say that it is a privilege to have been conferred this honor, and I'm really pleased to be here. I apologize for not being here yesterday. I missed the meeting. I had the board supervisors' meeting to attend. I just wanted to say that when I was first notified that this was a possibility, that most of my colleagues said, "What? Doesn't sound very exciting." And I said, "Well, as someone who's worked in county and state government for 16 years, it may not sound exciting to you," I said, "but one of my biggest priorities has always been to make government more responsive and make it something that people are not disenchanted with." And I saw this committee as an opportunity to work with the city departments, to see what could be done to... I think I'm a strong believer that people come to work every day with the idea of doing the best job they can. And sometimes, unfortunately, we set up bureaucracies and systems that don't allow them to do so. And one of the places we need to look to make those improvements are with those people who are actually doing the work on a daily basis. So again, even though I was told by many people, "Oh, that doesn't sound all that exciting," I was excited by it, because I think it is an opportunity to ensure that we are more responsive and that we are more accountable, and that people feel that government is something that does work for them, because I'm a firm believer that it does and it can. So again, it was a privilege to accept the mayor's recommendation and appointment, and I'm pleased to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, and you certainly embody those values as well. I'd like to recognize our Chair of the Audits and Government Efficiency Committee, Mr. Weezer, and then Mr. Reyes and Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And just last week, we heard Ms. Manriquez in our committee, the Audits and Governmental Efficiency Committee, and she presented her interest in serving on this commission. On top of that, we looked at her background and realized that this is perhaps one of the best-suited people we could have for this commission, because when you think about it, the work that Ms. Manriquez has been doing, working for Supervisor Malina and Mayor Villarosa, when he was then Assembly Member, working with constituents day in and day out, she's on the ground talking to people about their views on what government can and how they can be more efficient. So we're thrilled to have her as an addition to this commission and look forward to working with her. I think she brings a wealth of experience and a very unique perspective. So thank you, Ms. Manriquez. And I know you're very busy working for the supervisor, so thank you for edging out some time to also not only serve the county, but serve the city of Los Angeles in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes is our next speaker.
Thank you, Council President. This is the Suzanne Manriquez Fan Club. Suzanne, thank you so much for your hard work. Since early 90s, seen your work with then-Assembly Member Villarosa, now he's the mayor, and everything in between, now with Gloria Malina's office supervisor. And to be at all the events that you attend on behalf of the county, but to know that you also have a clear recognition that they are the same community, the same people, regardless of jurisdiction, and the fact that it's a quality of life issue that you prioritize, make it clear with your professionalism, your heart, your compassion. And for that, I just want to say publicly, thank you so much for being there for our communities. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes and Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just want to add to what my colleagues have said. We've had the pleasure of knowing each other for a very long time, and your experience, your expertise in various levels of government, I think, will be a wonderful addition to this commission, to use your experiences on how we can do things better and more productively in Los Angeles. And so I just wanted to add my thank you, and thank you to Supervisor Malina for letting us steal you away for a part of this, some of the time that will be required to be part of the commission. But welcome, and I thank you for your commitment to the city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Gruehl. And let me add my voice to the chorus as well, that I personally, and my office has really enjoyed working with you on open space issues, a number of things, and it's great to have county and city levels bridged, and you will embody that in this appointment. So very excited to have you aboard, but let's make it official. So if we can open the roll, Madam Clerk, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Mr. Zine has had his questions answered on number eight. If there's nobody else who wishes to be heard on it, we'll go ahead and...
I just want, I just have the approval of amendments that we've put through.
Okay. And that's already had a public hearing, so we do not require a public hearing, so...
Amendment going on, yes.
We don't have them yet? Okay. Well, we'll hold that until we have the amendments, then? Yep? And we'll move on to number 11.
Mr. President, on item 63, the substitute motion was circulated, and I don't believe there's any questions on that.
Sure, let's go ahead then, and if we can open the roll on item 63, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved.
Go forthwith.
Okay, if there's no objection, we'll send that forthwith. Okay? Next item, please.
Item 11 was called special by Councilmembers Parks and Gruehl.
Okay. The mid-year report, Mr. Parks, as Chair of the committee, take precedence.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask the staff and Ms. Sisson to come up and give us an overview as to the status of the city's budget at this time, and then we can go into questions.
Yes, good morning. You have before you the mid-year financial status report, just a couple months after the mid-year. But what we did want to do today is update you briefly on where we see ourselves with regards to revenue... regards to revenue and expenditures. We are currently projecting over expenditures of approximately $41.3 million. The largest portion of those deficits is attributable to the $8 million shortfall in the civilian flux account and $9.7 million shortfall in the workers' compensation account. We also have deficits in police, fire, general services, and transportation. And it should be noted that in some cases, these deficits are beyond departmental control. So, we can talk about those if there are questions on that. We've also made some recommendations in this report, instructing departments to unencumber and unappropriate certain MICLA funds that have been sitting around past our three-year deadline. And we have asked that those be unencumbered so that we can sweep those to cover deficits in other departments. Overall, we expect to still have about a $17 million shortfall in our year-end report that will have to be addressed between now and the year end. I do want to talk about revenue. What we are seeing now is basically revenue falling short of where we had originally hoped we would be at this point in time. While we plan to meet our revenue budget, that is largely due to the fact that we received $44 million in property tax revenue at the beginning of this fiscal year instead of at the end of the prior fiscal year. And so, that is making up for some of our revenue shortfalls. Where we find ourselves—let's give me a moment here. Where we find ourselves a little bit in doubt of meeting our estimates is basically in the areas of property tax, documentary transfer tax, where we expect to see declines. And that will be partially offset by what we seem to believe will be healthier revenues in terms of business license tax, and also in our departmental receipts, which continues to grow as a percentage of our overall budget. As I said, we do project meeting our year-end budgetary revenue estimates, but that is, again, due to receipts that were received early in the fiscal year. We're happy to take questions and answer any other inquiries of the council. I have with me David Luther, who is the Chief Management Analyst in our Group One Budget and Finance Group, and Marla Blevins, who you are accustomed to seeing on debt issues but has jumped into the lurch here to do her first financial status report.
Thank you very much. Let me just ask on attachment two, where we show the projected revenues. That's dated as of February 28th. Would we have any more updated figures? And if so, would we reflect more revenue that may impact some of the recommendations today?
We do have more updated figures. Those will be released with the mayor's budget. I can tell you, as we stated in this report, we were very close to producing the revenue outlook that comes out with the proposed budget. Where we stand today is we expect property tax to be down. We expect, again, documentary transfer tax to be down. And overall, on a net basis, we're anticipating about $24 to $25 million more in unallocated revenue than is projected in this particular report.
Okay. Now, one thing I was wondering about, if it comes out in the budget, then we would not have access to it for this fiscal year? And whether some of the changes we're talking about making, particularly with that $17 million deficit between now and July 1st or June 30th? That's why I think it's critical for us to have the updated figures to see whether we'd be making the kind of changes we're making today if those numbers were known.
It is true that the unallocated revenue that's projected has been assumed as a reversion and available to balance the '07-'08 budget. So, any actions taken today, we will have to be looking at whether we have departmental surpluses between now and then that we did not anticipate that could cover those actions, or if we miss our mark. Again, this is a projection of what we're seeing in unallocated revenue through the year end. If we miss our mark, of course, to the positive, that could cover any—
When you say it looks like we're going to meet our mark, is that for the end of the fiscal year? Or are we looking at it month to month?
Right now, we expect to meet it as of the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah. Because one thing, and I didn't notice this until after the Budget and Finance Committee, do we normally trail a month or so behind on the revenue projections on our status reports, or they're pretty consistent? Because it looks like the allocations and our commitments were up to date, but yet we were about a month or five weeks behind on the revenue projections.
Well, the revenue projections are largely based on the actual receipts we get, and we look to the Office of Finance for some of that information. We actually have very good contacts with the county and the Auditor Controller's Office on property tax. So, there are two members of my staff that all they do all year is not only estimating revenue, but following up on the sources of those revenue and also the data that's available to validate what we're projecting. In terms of the lag, it would vary according to revenue source. You know, we—sales tax data comes in differently from property tax data, but it's safe to say it's not immediate. And I would expect that, on average, we have a three-to-four week lag in when we receive the actual data for a particular time period.
I would just like to see in the future that as we can project as close as the date of the report, that gives us more flexibility to know whether we can use it this year or whether it should be swept. We have no choice today because it's already been swept.
I think it's fair to say that this particular, again, mid-year in quotation marks, report is unique in that it has come out so close to the mayor's proposed budget. And we're trying to, you know, set forth the actions we think need to be taken to make sure we end the year balanced. And also, we're trying to, you know, maintain the mayor's ability to release his budget.
All right. Let me just ask you, you mentioned earlier that $9.7 million have been unencumbered. Give us an idea, what did that come for? Is that the UB you're referring to?
I'm sorry, the nine points—I think I was referring to—that was the—oh, yes, the prior year general fund encumbrances. Those are—
I mean, is that the UB?
That is—not necessarily UB. It's items that have been encumbered, usually for a program or maybe a piece of equipment, and then it's not purchased, or they're not going to be able to spend it within this fiscal year. I should mention that there was a lot of discussion with departments on which of these funds were needed to complete the fiscal year and which of these funds were not needed, particularly on unencumbering funds, because an encumbrance usually means the department has made a commitment.
Okay. The issue is, then, this $9.7 figure, is that taken from departments? Or is that a merger of UB money that we pulled in and removed from departments? Or is it separated in any fashion? I was just trying to figure out what the $9.7 represented.
The $9.7 was identified in a separate exercise, council member, and it essentially represents what Karen insist and said, it's prior year monies that can be reverted back to the reserve fund. It's not related to the UB actions.
Okay, so it's coming out of the department's budgets?
Yes. And over the course of between now and the end of the fiscal year, with this council instruction that we're recommending, departments will start to—they've already started, but they will complete essentially all the actions necessary to make sure that money ends up in the reserve fund by June 30.
Okay. So, the issue is, then, that's—the next question is, on the UB, what condition is the UB in today? And how much have we swept and how much is remaining? And I think we asked if you could provide us a list so we'd have some idea.
Yes, we can provide that list to you, but essentially, to answer the summary questions, we started the year with $46.5 million in the UB. With the recommendations, if they're approved—I understand there's some modifications today, but with the recommendations contained in the mid-year report, there would still be $18 million left in the UB.
Okay. And what would be some of the items still left in the UB?
As remaining available balances, there'd be—I can run through the—I guess the list—
The larger ones, yeah.
Okay. LAPD Consent Decree Program, $1.7 million available. 311 Service Request System, $928,000 available. Gang Prevention Intervention, $1.7 million available. Contamination Reduction Program, that's special funded, $1.7 million available. In-Car Video, $5 million available. And that's the significant—I'm sorry, there's one more. Links Replacement System, $3.3 million available.
All right, thank you. And then, Karen, you mentioned earlier about the moving of MICLA funds from a variety of projects. Could you give us an idea of what projects the council members would know if their projects did impact their districts?
Boy, I don't have the list with me. I think in the—for the most part, though, we're talking about projects, because, you know, MICLA typically funds equipment purchases. We do have some assets, you know, notably like the Police Administration Building, but let's see. Okay. Yes, actually, we're looking at about $14 million in fleet acquisition. So, that would be, you know, fire, GSD, and police vehicles.
Those would be vehicles that we're not going to purchase?
That's correct. And again, these were reviewed in terms of meeting the criteria that we set for unencumbering MICLA funds, which is generally, if you have had those funds for three years and you have not spent them and you've not got a purchase order or something out on them, that was a policy adopted by the council as part of its financial policies, and so we're implementing that policy. There's about $6 million being swept for the retrofit of city buildings and $5.3 for alternative fuel infrastructure improvements. So, that's what we're looking at right now. That's over three years old.
Okay. Now, would the expectation be that those projects are no longer needed? Are they going to rebudget for them? What is the status of those?
The expectation was—what our plan was, we have kept the MICLA authority in place, so that those projects have existing MICLA authority. So, if they come through and they're ready to proceed, they meet the project readiness test, then we can, you know, proceed to budget them in future years. However, I want to emphasize, these are things that have been on the books for three years and have not made progress to the point of doing, you know, using those funds. So, the authority exists, the council's already approved the authority for these projects. So, if they come back and they are ready to proceed, we can try to incorporate them in the budget at that time.
If the projects are ready to be built, they'll be paid for with MICLA Commercial Paper Funds.
The thing is, what I'd like to see, if we could get some report back to the Budget and Finance on projects that are three years old that have been approved, what has been the delay and why haven't they been constructed? Because I think one of them is the fuel issue, and if we have budgeted for a certain number of vehicles and they've not been purchased and it's three years old, we need to find out why those requests were not acted upon, or whether the need is passed, or whether they fulfilled it in another fashion.
Yeah, we'll be happy to do that.
All right. And then, on the—the one thing I think was—we left the committee a little unclear. What's the final status of the Emergency Preparedness Department? Did we fund partial portions of it? Did we sweep portions of it? Is a portion of it still in the UB? Or just where are we on that at this time?
Is it in the unappropriated balance?
To answer your question, I don't know the specific details of what's been proposed at council, but as I understand it, we did leave funds remaining in the UB to take into account that there is a pending report. I don't know exactly where it is in the process, but yes, it's been taken into account.
Okay, is that the report that's coming?
I don't know the status of that report.
Yeah. Because the thing is, we've heard two different things. We hear that there's an item coming to us that's going to ask for partial funding, then we've heard it's been swept, and we're just trying to get some general sense of just what we could expect, because we're not going to have another budget meeting until the budget's over.
Correct.
So, if there's expectations, we just need to figure that out.
All right. I was just informed that the report would be heard at Public Safety Committee on Monday.
Okay, very good. And then, the other item that I think we talked briefly on dealing primarily with the gas or the petroleum account, just give us an idea of when the report back is going to come on the survey of vehicle usage and take-home vehicles. When could we expect that?
We would hope that we would have that probably right after the budget hearings. If we can get it—if we can have all of the data ready at the time that's considered during the budget process, we'll do that. I think as we reported in Budget and Finance, we have a lot of the data collected, particularly as it regards the city fleet. We need more information on some of the larger departments that manage their fleets independently.
Okay. And then, give us an idea, with this report, where are we on the reserve fund?
That's a good question. And the reserve fund, as it sits right now, will have the contingency reserve fund balance of $40.92 million. And I believe the total reserve fund balance, if I'm correct—well, the emergency reserve is going to be $108.5 million, and then the contingency is $40.9. So, I believe we're at about $149, $150. And I'll look to David if I got that wrong.
Yes. In attachment 1A of the report, we had estimated, with the information that we had in this—that we used in this FSR, if we had essentially approved all the recommendations, the transfer from the reserve fund and inclusion of a projected $17 million deficit yet to still be addressed, we would still end the fiscal year with a total reserve, which consists of emergency plus contingency of $186 million, which is approximately where we started this fiscal year.
Okay, so—
I'm $36 million better than my math.
Okay. So, we're better—we're at where we projected we'd be at the beginning of the year, so we're pretty much at that four and a half percent?
As long as the—
Don't keep spinning.
As long as the revenue that Karen had mentioned before, it's not revenue until the end of the fiscal year officially, but as long as that revenue stays as we project. Yes, sir.
Okay. So, we're in better shape than we thought a while back. Could you just also comment on the whole issue of the human resources benefits and also the issue of workers' comp, and what kind of hit we've taken on those two issues?
One of the things that's really hitting the Human Resources Benefits Account is the fact that our workforce is increasing. So, as we add people to the workforce, that means that we need more money to pay for the benefits packages. So, part of that is the increase in the city workforce. And then also, we have had increases in some of our contracts, particularly for health. As you may all be aware, we negotiate those contracts effective January 1st, and so we had anticipated a certain level of increases. And then, when we actually got our bill on January 1st, it was higher than we projected. So, those are the two major drivers in the benefits area. In terms of workers' comp, where we see ourselves is we have seen some declines over the prior years as a result of the workers' comp legislation. However, it seems that some of those benefits have sort of trailed down, and now we're seeing a flattening out and also in some areas, a modest increase. So, you know, we need to look more at those areas and see if there are areas where we can improve. The mayor has said to general managers and charged us with monitoring the number of claims by department, so we can start to, you know, pay more attention to each department and what we may need to do in terms of safety or other issues that would reduce those claims.
Okay. Well, one thing, on the amending motion that we're going to present today, a couple of things in that area, we're going to ask that you and the Personnel Department, the CEO, look at the whole issue of workers' comp for suggestions. And then, for the Human Resources Benefits, that we ask you and Personnel Department to look at the issue of an RFQ to get information about what's available so that we can at least make some educated guesses about those two areas, because I think from your figures, we're almost at $20 million impact just in this year.
Right, that's correct.
And the trend line seems to be going up as opposed to—the leveling out period seems to have gone by the wayside. Let me ask you also, would you comment on the issue—you mentioned earlier that of the deficit, it's primarily the larger departments, and some of the deficits are beyond their control. Could you just briefly comment on police, fire, general services, and transportation? What might be some of the issues that you're concerned with and where we may need to put attention?
Well, particularly with regard to general services, petroleum has—petroleum prices have outpaced even our projections. We put approximately $9 million in the unappropriated balance on top of what was budgeted in GSD's fuel account. With this report, we are sweeping that—we are using that $9 million and transferring it to GSD for fuel purposes. it to GSD for fuel purposes. And we are still anticipating, based on their projections, maybe a $2 to $3 million additional need when we come back for the year-end report. Again, fuel prices are not something that they can predict. We also have issues in transportation with some of the overtime that's required either for special events or for things like natural disasters. I mean, not necessarily natural disasters, but for example, the windstorms that were had recently, they're called out on overtime. With police, police overtime is an issue. With fire, you know, until we get all of our firefighters fully staffed, constant staffing continues to be a challenge to budget for appropriately and to predict.
And then you mentioned the magic word, constant staffing. One of our summer reports was going to be a study. Do we have an idea on the timeline of that?
To be truthful, I hesitate to commit.
Well, after the budget, I realize.
But no, we have actually, our analyst has actually done a terrific job, has got a terrific start on that. I think as we mentioned in Budget and Financing, Budget and Finance, one of the challenges with constant staffing is it gets to your root deployment structure. And so it's a little bit more complex than we had anticipated, but I think we have a good start. It would be our goal to have that available for you during Budget and Finance deliberation.
Okay, very good. And then the issues that you commented on your Page 54, where you've given specific direction to general managers, I just need to figure out, how do we put some teeth into that? Because at the very time that one of the top items, you're asking people to slow down their hiring, we're not asking for a freeze, but slow down, we have departments that are actually accelerating at the same time. And I just need to figure out, how do we give some emphasis to support you as we give those four or five instructions so that departments know that they have to toe the line between now and the end of this year and into next year?
We are monitoring on a biweekly basis and preparing reports essentially showing the hiring in the city. For the last two payroll periods ago, there were 74 total hires in the city, and this is not net of attrition, so there were positions that would be essentially deducted to get net hiring. But just to give you an idea, 74 positions, two payroll periods ago, and 39 positions this last completed payroll period. We review by department essentially every hire now and report to the mayor's office on the status of especially those departments that are projecting deficits, that are hiring staff. We do have hiring plans for each department. They're somewhat flexible, but essentially we're working with the mayor's office to monitor hiring by department. And as we prepare this report, we'd be glad to also share that with your office on a biweekly basis as well.
As we look towards the end of this fiscal year and go into next fiscal year, are we going to give them some kind of a template of hiring pattern throughout the year so we won't have these peaks and valleys? Because as you mentioned earlier, what's driving the human services, what's driving the pension increases, what's driving a number of things is the hiring of personnel? And whether we can balance them through a 12-month hiring plan versus these massive peaks towards the end of the fiscal year? Are we looking at things such as that to give that kind of guidance?
Well, I think one of the issues with hiring is availability of lists, availability of tests. There are certain things that departments don't control, and also candidate pools. And for some jobs, it's easier to recruit candidate pools than others. What we're trying to move toward is to say, here are your salary dollars, you need to stay within them. But provide department managers, since, you know, they're really the experts in their area, the flexibility to say, I need to hire, you know, a management analyst now, that's more important to me than, you know, traffic engineer, whatever it may be. But give the general managers some discretion, but hold them accountable to the dollars they have been budgeted. And that's probably going to be more effective than actually trying to manage their hiring by particular classification or how they even it out through the year. Because again, there may not be lists available. They may be ready to hire, but they may not have candidates to pull from. Or there may not be exams, or they may need new classifications. So we are trying to work with the Personnel Department, and there are some things that actually, as you know, the CAO and the Personnel Department share responsibility for many personnel actions. And we're trying to work towards, our office is working in a more coordinated fashion so that when departments do have direction, whether it's through the budget or something else, to hire, they're able to do that, but also that we are holding them accountable to that salary budget. And I think that's what we're looking at. As David said, in the end of this fiscal year, we're monitoring that on a biweekly basis. We're having conversations with those departments and, you know, making that available to the mayor's office so the mayor's office can have those conversations. And then we're planning to continue that through next year.
Now, you hit the magic point, hold them accountable. The dilemma that we keep running into is that we set those standards, we stayed away from hiring freezes, we've done all those things because general managers have said we can't manage with those kinds of impediments. But yet, we're three months away from the end of the fiscal year and we are $41 million overspent with the expectation of another 17 before the end of the year. The missing link is the accountability because it appears that there are general managers that, on the one hand, stay within their budget and they, their reward is we sweep their accounts because they stay within budget. Those who do not stay in budget, we reward them by giving them more money. And so the accountability issue is what's lacking. And then it falls right into my last question is, what do we do and where do we find the $17 million that we believe at a minimum is expected by June 30th, when we know that all the expected new revenue that would come in between now and June 30th is already in next year's budget? So our choices are what, to unravel '07 and '08 before it gets started? Where do we look at that accountability and how do we nail those things down so general managers know it's just not a veil threat, it's actually going to impact you? And then we reward the general managers to stay in place, that say, if you stay within your budget, we won't sweep you. So that's the missing point, is the accountability. Because there, some general managers, historically, there is no accountability. And so that's what we need to figure out, how do we put some nails into that issue when we give those instructions that is meaningful?
Just, we're over the six minutes now, so if we can...
I just want to answer the question on the 17 million. We did take that into account in preparing the '07, '08 budget in terms of the unallocated, the portion of that 24 million that's going to be needed to cover that overage. So we aren't relying on having to like, you know, take money out of the reserve fund to cover that deficit. I think the issues you raise about accountability are very good ones, and I'm sure you could talk with many general managers that, you know, feel disincentivized because it does feel, you know, like I do a good job and the money's taken away. And I think that's an accountability discussion that, you know, we should continue and we should probably have that in Budget and Finance, and we might have it more as part of the Budget and Finance hearings on the proposed budget. Because it is a dilemma. It's not an easy, it's not an easy situation to solve, but it's one that, it's an issue whose time has come and we need to solve it.
My last question, could I make a last statement?
Yeah, we're seven minutes, 40 seconds, just so you know.
Let me just ask one thing. As you're looking towards the 17 million, if we get to the point of unraveling something that is important to other departments or important to next year's budget, a real consideration has to be at some point, an advance loan on next year's salary might be the message that you don't get to have the unlimited budget. And so that's the final comment I'll make.
Thank you. We have Ms. Gruehl and Mr. Labons, Mr. Weisar and Mr. Rosenthal next on the queue. Ms. Gruehl.
Ms. Sisson, guess what question I was going to ask now?
I don't, I don't have a clue.
Hopefully, and if I could ask the DOT to come up as well. First issue is regarding the LEDs and the item, and I'm not sure, I don't think I heard Mr. Parks ask that question, but it segues into the next part of this. And I think your statement about accountability was quite a good segue for where I'm going to come. If you could please explain to my colleagues the LED portion of this mid-year report and the $2 million that we all gasped when we saw it being taken out of transportation?
Yes, we did some research on that item. And what we found is that actually at the end of '05, '06, we budgeted approximately $2 million for what we're believed to be one-time costs related to LED infrastructure. And that was not taken out in the '06, '07 budget, okay? So we, there was 4 million in the '06, '07 budget. We did not account for the discount that was available on the LED purchases as well as this sort of one-time adjustment that didn't get made. And so we effectively double budgeted. We basically put $4 million in for a program that only needed $2 million. And so that is the 2 million that has been recommended to be swept out of the, in the mid-year financial status report. So that was an error on the part of my staff in terms of how that was budgeted and not taking into account the discount, so.
And I know, and Mr. or Ms. President, I know it's kind of noisy in the chambers. If we could ask someone, it's kind of hard to hear.
If people could please keep their side conversations to a minimum.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so that, one, I know Mr. Parks and I seconded a motion yesterday that will ask the department to come back on the status of the LEDs where we are. That was a big issue for this council as to the implementation of the LED program, whether we had it internally, externally, and its coordination with left-hand turn signals. Now, you all know that we all went apoplectic at that meeting at budget, although even probably more apoplectic now, when I found out what has happened since then. Colleagues, when we were in committee, we, and when there was some confusion over this 2 million, someone said it was related to the left-hand turn signals. It was the first time that I heard there was any problem with left-hand turn signals. It is April 17th, it was April 8th, I think, at the date, first time I'd heard. We put in last year $802,000 to add eight, excuse me, 25 additional left-hand turn signals in the City of Los Angeles, effectively doubling the number of left-hand turn signals. First time we had a four-year, and I remember, we were looking all through the list, we had a four-year plan, a strategy to put left-hand turn signals in the City of Los Angeles, and we made it a priority. We put it in the UB because we wanted to see what the personnel was required to do. So what I have found out happened, and I want to say what happened so we can look at this as a structural change in the future, but I also want to know that it's never going to happen again and why both CAO and the department, they're equal blame here as to the first time we heard there was a problem was a week ago, by chance, by chance. And so last year, there was 802,000, the department put, and I may ask for it since I'm Chair of Transportation, even though it's a budget, I don't have six minutes for this, but 802,000 in the budget for 25 additional. The report was written in July of 2006 by the department to the CAO requesting it to be taken out of the UB and referred to three different committees. It went to personnel in October, and we can figure out why it took from July to October to get to personnel's first challenge. And then it was given to the CAO to report back. And the report that we got was dated April 5th.
That's correct.
April 5th. And when we looked at this and the, and that report says, I think, that you're sweeping the $802,000 and that the money that's required for the remainder of this fiscal year, three months, that you will, I think, install six to seven lights. Is that correct?
Where we are at right now is, let me do the first one because that's the good news. On the LEDs, we have done some 719 LED replacements thus far this fiscal year. We are averaging about 75 signalized intersections per month on the LEDs. And so we are moving forward with those since May of last year, we were up to full speed. In July, we've done over 700 LEDs. To the left turn signals, where we are at on that right now is, as of today, we have completed some 36 left turn signals or approaches, which is at about 18 intersections thus far this fiscal year.
That's great. We funded 45.
You funded 45.
We funded 45. Again, I know that you don't have, you didn't have the positions, I want to go back. But what I want this council to know and the public know is that we funded 45, and if, and the department, that 18 is part of what you were...
You funded 45 left turn arrows, which is, there are two, or those are for the approaches. So in actuality, you actually funded only about 21 intersections on average. And we've done 18 of those 21.
Okay. How many of the 45?
We have done...
18 of the 45?
No, let me, I have to explain this very carefully. You authorized 45 approaches, not 45 signalized intersections. On average, there are two left turn signals at each intersection. So with 45, it's roughly 22 and a half intersections.
So what you're telling me is that you were able to do a lot of them even without the $802,000?
We were able to do it by shifting dollars with the expectation that when we got ready to reconcile at the end of the fiscal year, that those dollars would be available.
Okay. So my point, however, is, that's great that you've done some of that, but think if, and if we had the 802,000 and the position authorities that we all agreed to that went forward, how many left-hand turn signals and intersections we would have had? And that's where, when you look at the four-year plan that this council adopted, we said this is a priority. And what we heard from the department and other people as well, we kind of, and I don't know if this is true or not, but we sat on it for a while because we were going to use that savings because we knew we couldn't balance our budget. This is the policymaking body of the city. And that with the priority of left-hand turn signals, whatever, however the numbers you want, where it is, we wanted to make sure that we used all of that money for that purpose and those positions were hired so that we could make it happen. So I think, and Mr. Parks has talked about, the importance of, and when you look at the numbers of the departments where salary savings, which have helped us, of course, balance the budget, but when you look at the vacancies in each of these departments, and what vacancies mean is the priorities we had did not get completed in most instances.
That's true.
Okay? So you look at $195,000 in aging, 3.76 million in building and safety, 228,000 in children, youth and families with a very small budget, that's a large percentage, 3.2 million in con ad, 3.9 million in public works, and 2.8 in street services. The reason we're elected primarily is to deliver the basic city services in this city. And the frustration I have, so what I want to make sure is, one, the CAO to come back, and Karen and I mentioned this, to come back and to structurally look at, and the CLA, as we go through this budget next week, as to how this doesn't happen again, and that there is a reminder that we are the policy body of the city council. And when we say this is a priority, we want it implemented. So my real-life question today, that's my really, you know, partly upset, you have really seen me upset, but if this happens again, you'll always say that, is where is the $802,000 that would have allowed us to hire the additional staff that will get us more left-hand turn signals? Because we anticipate, at least, and I haven't seen the mayor's budget, but that the four-year plan that we had allows us to add the 20 we always have plus an additional 25. That was the strategy we all adopted. So where's the 802,000?
I believe that 802,000 was recommended for, you know, sweeping out of the UB to balance the budget for this year. And that was based on the report, which as you accurately said, was released on April 5th, that the funds that were needed for the department to finish what it had begun were available in other budgetary accounts. So that is a recommendation that's in the report now. It can be amended or changed. And I do just want to say that there was no conscious decision...
Hold my time, I know I'm way over on that one.
...to hold this report to save money. I mean, we, my office is accountable, I have to take full responsibility for the fact that this report sat for a good six months. I think, you know, there are a lot of, there were a lot of other things. It wasn't a conscious thing where someone put it on their desk and just didn't deal with it. There were many competing... There were many competing priorities at the time. Nonetheless, it shouldn't happen. We respect the fact that this body is the ultimate policymaking body, and we respect the fact that when there's direction given within the budget or within the committee structure, that it's our job to expedite those things through the process. So, one thing I do want to say is that there was not a conscious decision that, you know, we were going to, it's not our role to make that decision. It's your role. It's not our role to make that decision. And secondly, I would like to give some assurance to the council members that within my office, when this came to light, we did have some discussions, and we are putting some processes in place to ensure, I can't guarantee 100% this will never, ever happen again, but I can tell you that the processes that are put in place make it highly unlikely that it will happen again. So, again, I want to take responsibility for this. You know, although Gloria is head of Transportation, in my view, this report was in our court. It is our responsibility. And if we were, you know, if we needed information, if we needed something, we should have been picking up the phone and making sure that we got that. So, that money is...
And I know, I probably will push my button again because there's some other issues. This was the most important issue to me, and I know to my colleagues. So, just like you know that Mr. Parks, alleys, you know, streets are, alleys are important. I'll say it loud and clear, left-hand turn signals are important to our community and to get it implemented. And so, I give the CAO a hard time for that, but I also want, you know, DOT, we meet twice a month, we talk. I want departments who are also represented, if there is an issue that is not being pushed through, if it's being held up in a committee, if the CAO is not writing the report or the CLA, tell us. We assumed we were having all these left-hand, again, we've been doing a certain portion, but think if we had the positions and the $802,000 there. And so, do not be shy. This is important to us. And so, I put equal blame on this for us not knowing. And it was only by chance that we asked that question because the report was April 5th. It would have gone to Personnel probably in a month or so. By that time, it would have been July 1st.
Ms. Gruehl, if you could push that button again?
Yes, okay. So, just in closing, I want to have an amendment that the $802,000, Mr. Parks, be put back in to our budget for us to do the remainder of this, so...
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience.
Yes, Mr. Labange.
Very much, Madam President. Thank you, Ms. Gruehl. Members, this is very important. This is not sweeping it. This is like call the coroner, it's gone, it's gone to Evergreen, it's over. This is issues that really disappoint me because we have not been informed as representatives. And I would suggest, as a member of the Public Works Committee and the esteemed Chairman, Mr. Rosendahl, that all public works matter that come to where they may be swept away or dissolved, go to committee before so we know what's happening. This is a track meet here, and people sprint. We hope they sprint to complete the work of the public, but sometimes it gets derailed or they get disqualified if they step out of the lane, if I can use a track term, but we have to have that information because if we don't know the information, we can't get it. Mrs. Sisson, answer this question if you would, please. On the issue of workers' compensation on wellness programs, okay, what's our attendance? If we were a high school, would we have good attendance in our departments? Do we know our attendance?
Boy, I don't know the answer to that.
I want the answer to that. I just want to say, members, because I think it's important to know if we want to look at, where's, if people coming to work? We want people to come to work and charge hard and help the public. But I think with computerization now, you could tell, you know, is everybody coming to work? Has everybody participated in this great opportunity to serve the people of Los Angeles? I would hope that. And also, I remember a legislative analyst drafted a motion for me to ask that the budget comes out 20th of April, is that correct, or right around there? That on the 20th of October, we have an infrastructure report. So, we get this checks around the year. Because you know, before you know it, it's Labor Day, and before you know it, it's Thanksgiving, and then boom, it's the new year. Why I'm saying that, and the way I'm saying it so fast, is all this, what you do is very important, and those who work with you to divide the mayor council budget. It is a mayor proposes council-approved budget, so we're part of that package there. And I just wanted to, A, ask truly to look at, start looking at numbers and looking at it, all of us think you see, but not everybody's, you know, what are the challenges here? It's also workman's comp, but also making sure people are coming to work, and make sure they're participating in their service to Los Angeles. And also, to ask that committees, whether mine, if there's arts and parks projects, know beforehand, because you're out there, and guess what? As Ms. Gruehl said, you find out sometimes from somebody right there you didn't even know got dissolved. It's dissolved, not swept away. I would like to ask one thing. I did work real hard in my district, tried to do a good job, and we had a project that was not rightfully designed. We removed a project at Las Feliz and Riverside, then we went to help out the other project because of a 1930 street, 1930 years ago, street widening project, Franklin, Normandy to Western, the walls were coming down. So, we had to do an emergency repair, and we had savings in that project. Now, you want to take that money and sweep it somewhere. Well, we just did another project on Hyperion where we fixed the street but caused the problem in the gutter. Now, the street's going to be destroyed, it's going to cost you twice as much unless we take that money that we saved on Franklin and put it over on Hyperion. This is a small thing, but it's important, so I need to work with you on that. And also, members, we fought, and I fought when I got here, for Wilshire Boulevard. It's still a problem. Wilshire Boulevard between Van Ness Avenue and all the way west to La Brea is one of the worst-curbed streets because of the intensity, the 4,000 MTA buses, that if you lined them up from the Palisades in Santa Monica, you could go walk on the top of all of them to Montebello. It's destroyed the street. There was $10 million that were put in the budget, and they were swept away. And now, people look at me and say, Tom, can't you fix the street? And I thought you had $10 million, which was going to half go to the south side, half to the others. This is before you got there, Mrs. Sisson, because this process here just took it away, it dissolved it. So, we have to, I think I said my piece, I think you understand it. It's very important, your role that you're doing, I think it's very important, the general manager, of all general managers, transportation, number one issue. And to be shocked, as you were, it doesn't help us in the operation of the city. So, I said my piece. I thank you, I sit down.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, Madam President. At the Budget Committee, the CAO had recommended sweeping an $80,000. That's nothing to do with transportation, but you're welcome to stay here, Ms. Jeff, and listen to this and answer the question. The CAO had recommended sweeping an $80,000 surplus in the Department's salaries general account. I believe that we gave instruction to keep the $80,000 surplus in the salaries general. I don't see it in the report. Is there...
Are you referring to which department, sir?
El Pueblo.
El Pueblo.
El Pueblo.
The discussion at Budget and Finance, two things. In the report itself, there wasn't a recommendation to sweep the money. The recommendation that was discussed at committee was to use an $80,000 surplus in two accounts to fund as-needed hours, and the general manager's here, so I'd rather just let him address that.
Thank you. Good morning, councilmen. As my colleague and the CAO indicated, that is correct. You may recall that the $80,000 was actually not part of the original mid-year. There was money that was actually set aside. We came forward and asked for those simply to be allowed to manage within our own budget. The wonderful comments by Chairman Parks, Budget and Finance, and also my colleague in the CAO, referring to letting managers manage within their own resources, that's simply what we're asking to do. The $80,000 salary savings, we're not asking for anything beyond what we already have. Those $80,000 would be used, approximately half of that would be used to continue museum hours at El Pueblo. The other $40,000 would be used, special events program assistant, to ensure that we have events...
And that's what I'm concerned about. I want to make sure that we continue to operate the museum with sufficient hours and on weekends and to provide that additional security. And with the report you presented, I don't see that that's the way it's worded, to be, allow that, for that to happen.
The, there is a motion that we saw, I would call it a draft because I haven't seen a signed copy, but there is a motion that addresses that today from Mr. Parks.
Mr. Parks, you have a motion that you're going to amend that will include that? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl is next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't want to beat a dead horse, but my colleagues have truly articulated our frustration. I'll give you one personal one, besides the left-hand turn signals, which all of us were enthused about, and what Tom Labange just said about public works projects and so on. The pet peeve on my level was the $300,000 to $500,000 we in the budget process approved last year for the Department of Aging. I told the department, we're not focusing enough on our seniors. We need to come up with a plan. I asked them to invest that money in coming up with a 10-year plan, vet it with community, get things going. Got 300 grand in the budget process. It wasn't until you came before us the other day in committee and said, oh, by the way, we'll sweep it into the fund. I said, what happened? Well, nothing happened. So, my suggestion is that on a monthly basis, we get report backs as to the progress of our dollars that we, for the people, have committed to certain things. Then I would suggest quarterly, there is a true update on everything. So, we don't get to the end of the year and find out projects, be it public works, left-hand turn signals, or the Department of Aging issue that I've been talking about to the community, oh, we're doing this, we're doing that. We didn't do anything. So, you know, if we're going to do our job properly as policymakers, and the mayor do his job as the executive, we need to know this stuff in a timely manner. So, I just encourage us, as we go through this budget year process, to come up with a strategy that does that.
And councilmember, we would agree, and we will be coming forward with some proposals that will actually involve yourselves as well as our office in terms of regular status at both the committee level and at the budgetary level.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Smith is our next speaker. You want to do it from there?
Thank you, Madam President. I was just talking to the chairman of the committee about something. When we had this in committee, dealing with public works, we were concerned about whether we were completing our work projects or not. And I received a letter today stating that everything was going to be done as resurfacing, floor ceiling, dirt, and street alleys, and sidewalk repair, but wasn't getting it done this year, and the work process was going to be the street tree issue. And that the removal of money and sweeping of money from that would set our street tree program back from 8.8 years, which is already above the national average, to 10.1 years. And that is not an action I'm willing to take today. And so, I'm requesting that we add to Mr. Parks' motion on that, that we take a look at the $1 million being swept from public works on the street tree issue, and come back and talk about street trees separately, just that one item. So, with your approval, members, I'd add that to Mr. Parks' motion that we come back and look at the street tree issue.
Okay. Thank you very much. For the second time, Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you. And I wanted to ask a quick question on general services, which I did not get to ask in committee because there was a $4.5 million deficit included salary overtime, salaries as needed, which is about $2 million, and then water and electricity, 1.371. Could you explain to us what, why those are particularly high? I get the actual petroleum products account, that that went up for a large amount, but if you could explain the water, electricity, and the overtime? And hold my time.
Jason went to the CAO's office. Basically, the salaries overtime and as needed were due to the fact that we had a large vacancies in our OPS program so that we couldn't...
Large vacancies in our OPS, did you say? That's the Office of Public Safety.
The Office of Public Safety. We couldn't hire enough of them, and we had to use overtime and as needed to fill those work. That actually generated general fund salary savings. However, if you remember about a month ago, we had that issue with the SMS where we had to use $2.6 million for the reformers, and that money was actually taken out of their salaries general savings. So, that's why we just backfilled that.
Okay. And on the electricity, is that...
Water and electricity, basically, we had overfunding. We had issues with wrecking park sites where the rate was changed from irrigation rates to regular use.
I'm sorry, you had, get close to the microphone, I'm having a hard time hearing. Irrigation, irrigation too?
Basically, what happened was the DWP changed their rates that they charged us at our wrecking park sites. So, before, we were paying irrigation rates with the water that we used, but now, because it was in the same meter, that our rate for the same water was about four times higher. So, currently, we're using money from that account to remeter the meters at wrecking parks to generate savings. We had just additional electric rates that went up, so we actually put aside about $1.3 million in UB for that specific purpose, and we're transferring the money to address the over...
So, if I understand correctly, we were previously being charged irrigation rates for things that were non-irrigation. They came in and said, sorry, can't do it that way, DWP, we're going to charge you more for the non-irrigation, which was not an anticipated cost.
Correct.
Okay. So, that is the higher amount. We can't convince the DWP.
We had this discussion with them last year when they told us they were going to do this, but we are continuing, that's part of the remetering that's going on, is to try to get as much of that on an irrigation rate as we can.
Okay. And I know that on the LEDs, for example, Karen, you mentioned to me that last year, we fought and fought and fought to get DWP to pay for those, and now, because of legislative changes in this year's budget, they will be able to do that. Is that correct?
That's correct. Okay. That's one of the good stories you'll be hearing.
Yeah, one of the few. So, and just to close, I know I still see some DOT people here, to close on the left-hand turn signal issue, what I would like, again, not only the chairman is going to add into his amending motion, the language on the $802,000, but I want, working with the CAO and the department, an implementation plan as to how to increase the number next year because if my math is correct, it's going to be 20 in a normal year, an additional 25, and an additional 18, I think it is, and how we will do that. And to ask my colleague, Mr. Zine, to schedule your April 5th report at the earliest convenience to get that on the calendar so that we can get that finished. But I would like to, as part of this, ask for a report back on the implementation of the left-hand turn signals and how we will catch up to that.
We're happy to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Gruehl. Our next speaker is Mr. Labange.
Very much. I just wanted to ask a question because if you're sweeping it, does that mean you're sweeping it and taking it to a landfill, or are you sweeping it and going to recycle it July 1st?
To stick with your metaphor, it's being recycled, but it's being recycled this year, not as of July 1st. It is, we are de-obligating it wherever it is, and then it goes technically into the reserve for economic uncertainties, and then it's transferred back out to cover deficits in other departments.
Right, but so, we have to recreate it all again? It's gone, it's dissolved?
That's correct.
Okay, good. Now, the one question I want to ask, the park rangers, we fought hard for, Ms. Gruehl left the effort on the split on the Office of General Services. Has that changed at all? Are those positions in the budget? Do I got to fight for 39 that are in there?
This doesn't affect positions. This might have taken some of the dollars, but again, we tried to work with departments to get a sense of what positions they thought they would fill before the end of the fiscal year, as well as, again, for the most part, with some, a notable exception here in terms of some reports that got delayed, but for the most part, these are programs that just, for whatever reason, did not get started, did not, did not get, did not progress to where they thought they would be by this time, and the departments do not foresee being able to use that money between now and the end of the fiscal year. So, I think in many cases, you will see that as departments put forward their 0708 budgets, they again ask for dollars for those programs, but at this point in time, when we spoke with them, they indicated that, you know, they could live without this money.
I got it, but I don't know if the people we represent could live without the money or the services. If I could ask Mr. Miller and maybe Mrs. Sisson to get together and maybe draft a motion for me to ask that at some point, we divide at some time of the year, whether it's in January, that we get knowledgeable of this, of progress reports so we know, and it's not all relied on the Finance Committee? Because if we fight for these to get in the budget, we want to make sure they get done. And I don't, I get accused sometimes of micromanaging departments. I don't micromanage, and I don't manage. I try to install and inspire and get things done for the district and for the city of Los Angeles. So, I wanted to make that statement. Give me a motion and what would be complimentary, which would be complimentary to what the responsibilities are of finance, but all public works projects that may die, they should go to Public Works Committee, right, Mr. Rosendahl? Before... Before, you know, like in February, to get an update on it and see, and we can go from there. Parks at Parks, Aging Me.
I would just request you let myself and the CLA's office work on something, because one of the things that-
Post this budget. You don't have to work on it now, but I want it before, you know, like in June or July, that we could look to 2007, '08 with some structure that could give us a chance to look at, as well as, like, I really believe this, members, an infrastructure report every October to see where we are, not just our infrastructure, for the infrastructure of the great water system of Griffith Park and the EWP that doesn't have any water, and Dante's view for the third or fourth or eighth month. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labonge. Next speaker, final speaker in the queue, Mr. Parks.
Madam Chair, could we just hold this on the table for a little while, until we get the substitute motion, and come back and vote on what the motion? I think all the questions have been exhausted, but we do have one more item to add to the substitute motion.
All right, we'll hold that item on the desk.
Madam President, I believe there was a request to take item 57 out of order, and that was called special for Councilmember Weiss.
Mr. Weiss.
I could ask Chief Hill, Captain Easwith him, and Commission President Nahai to come to the table, please. Hold my time while they do that, please. Thank you all for coming to the table. Colleagues, last week, when Mr. Rosendahl and I put this motion in regarding the fires, the fire that occurred in the CD5 Beverly Hills area last week, concerns were raised in council about whether we could have a discussion, an open session or closed session. I understand those concerns, and I have talked about them with Commission President Nahai and with Chief Hill. The two matters that I'm going to ask them about are matters which they agree can and should be discussed in open session. So, I just want people to understand beforehand that we've already discussed that. Is that's correct?
That's correct.
President Nahai, is that correct, Chief Hill? You need to put the mic at least marginally pointing towards your mouth. The first item is simply this. The fire last week was a wake-up call to Los Angeles, as was the Hollywood Hills fire, Mr. Labonge, a week or so before, that due to the light rainfall we've experienced this year, we could be in for a very hot time this summer. And I do appreciate that DWP and the Fire Department had already tried to accelerate their brush clearance efforts in light of the climate that we have experienced. But I've been working with them, my staff has been working with them over the past couple days, to try to accelerate the city's efforts even more with respect to clearing DWP property. And I'm very pleased today that we can announce that DWP and the Fire Department are going to step things up even faster this year than ever before, and they're really going to accelerate matters. And it's due, I believe, thanks to you, Commission President Nahai, to your commitment to adopting a different philosophy, a different protocol with respect to how DWP is going to handle these matters. And I'd like to ask you, Commission President Nahai, to fill us in on that. You could hold my time.
Thank you. Well, first, Councilmember Weiss, let me thank you for your leadership on this issue, and the rest of the council as well, and your personal involvement in this. This was a tragedy, the loss of a home and fire damage to other homes. We take it very, very seriously. DWP has served this city now for 100 years, and we will live up to our responsibilities, depending on the outcome of the investigations that are being conducted. Regarding brush clearance protocols, you're absolutely right. Working together with the Fire Department, we have set in motion a different approach, which is weather-related and not calendar-driven, which has been the traditional approach. And we all recognize that we're going through climate changes, and we've had an unusually dry season, and as a result, I understand that the Fire Department is going to actually go out to bid next week, not only with respect to Franklin Canyon, but also with respect to, I think, 13 other properties that the Fire Department and DWP work together on with respect to brush clearance activities.
Mr. Nahai, tell us a little bit more about the change in philosophy from a date-driven approach, calendar-driven approach, to a climate-driven approach.
I think we just have to recognize that our climate is changing, and we've seen in Los Angeles that we have to be ready, I think, for rather extreme conditions. These freakish winds, which were unanticipated and an aberration, and maybe actually revisiting us today. We couldn't have foreseen them, but we now know that our climate is capable of them. So, with respect to brush clearance, we know that there is now, we now know that there's the possibility of this danger, and therefore, it just makes sense to accelerate brush clearance activities.
I very much appreciate your courage in deciding that it's not appropriate for the DWP to harness itself to an arbitrary date in the future, but rather to ask for an acceleration of the process. Chief and Captain, can you tell us what you're going to do in regard to that?
Councilman, in response to the situation as it's been described, the weather conditions here are extreme at this time, as we're experiencing another potentially day of high winds, low humidity, that would be key factors in another recurrence. The Fire Department is stepping up this effort. I've directed members of my staff to immediately convene a bid session, whereas all of the properties in the watershed and water distribution area around the city will be handled in a very expeditious manner. We anticipate those bids coming back within a few days, and those contracts will be awarded.
And so, you, in fact, made a decision with respect to putting the bids out last Friday? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Tell us about that, and tell us why that represents an acceleration of what you were otherwise doing.
I think that that is a very, it's a good thing to do for the protection of the city, and as well, in response to this low and high, this low humidity, high potential for brush fires. To accelerate this program, we'll reduce fuel loads in the Mountain Fire District, and if there is another brush fire, it will not be as damaging, and the Fire Department will be able to have defensible space to work in those areas, and to be able to contain those fires much quicker.
Can you give us a sense of a target date of what you're looking for in terms of the clearance from DWP that you're contracting for?
In response to the bid sessions, we are anticipating that we will be able to shorten this clearance around those 13 properties to about three weeks, and have them all cleared, and we're looking at that as a turnaround date.
Thank you. Thank you both for working together and working with my staff to move that schedule up. I very much appreciate it. Now, and recognizing, Mr. Nahai, that you and I have had a conversation about what can and, you know, should and should not be discussed in open session, I know you have a statement that you would like to make about issues relating to responsibility for the fire that occurred last week, and I want to give you the chance to make that statement.
Well, thank you very much. As I said earlier, DWP will live up to its responsibilities, depending on the outcome of the investigations that are going on at this time. The Fire Department is conducting an investigation, and DWP is cooperating and will cooperate fully with that investigation. We've also initiated our own internal investigations regarding this, and we are today reporting the incident to our insurance carriers. I think we have a legal obligation to report it to the insurance carriers in any event, and we're doing that today. So, we fully recognize and have a great deal of sympathy with the citizens that suffered as a result of the fire damage, but as custodians of public funds, as a public agency, we also have the responsibility to make sure that all of the facts are thoroughly reviewed, that investigations are concluded, before we come to a determination as to the responsibility of the department. So, that's where we are, and it's a priority for us, and we want to make sure that we get down to the bottom of exactly what happened here, how the sequence of events unfolded, before we take the next steps.
Chief, anything you wish to add?
I want to commend Department of Water and Power, the Commission, and the managers for their stepped-up effort in this process.
Okay. I am, I'm going to just close by saying that I do expect that we will soon have from you that full accounting of what happened. I stood in the backyard where the fire started, and I don't think there's actually going to be any great secret as to what happened, because I think it's already well-known, the Fire Department's already discussed it, and the arson investigators have issued their conclusions. But what's really important is, as we look towards, you know, we're speaking here today on a day with exceptionally and aberrationally high winds in Los Angeles, and as Chief Hill explained, the dry winds act to suck the humidity out of the air and act to make it more likely that we'll suffer a fire like this again. And I think everyone expects we're going to have fires this summer. Your commitment to, commitment of both of you, and on behalf of both of your departments, to accelerate your brush clearance efforts on public property is very significant, and I commend you for that, and I very much appreciate it, and the people in my district very much appreciate it, because when I was out there on the day of the fire, that's what people were telling me. They were concerned that DWP hadn't cleared its brush, and what you're doing, Mr. Nahai, is putting DWP in a climate mode rather than in an arbitrary date harness. I very much appreciate that, and the people in my district appreciate it as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Our next speaker is Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank you, Jack, for what you did. Quickly did something rather important for obvious reasons, and did it so fast, and got everybody together. I'm most grateful for your leadership on that.
I have a bunch of questions, real quick. Tonight, ironically, I'm going to be at the Marquesa Knolls Homeowners Association, and right after that, I'm going to be in the Petruro Canyon Citizens Advisory Group. These are two groups right there in the hillsides, in the mountains, and in the canyons. It's a big issue for us, very sensitive to it. Answer these questions. How often do we inspect for brush clearance compliance?
Leave that to the Chief Hill to respond.
Annually, we do our brush clearance program. We begin in April with our mailouts to private property owners and the notification that the Fire Department is going to begin inspections during the month of May. Those inspections take place during the month of May to June. We have a cadre of firefighters that canvass the city in all of those areas that we're known to be and within the high-fire severity zone. We complete those brush clearance inspection programs. We begin the notification process of those property owners where the brush is not in compliance, and we issue notices to correct.
And the second part, because we're in a strange world these days, climate change is real, does our schedule take the weather into consideration as things do shift, like right now, we're having the wind, and it's been happening in different parts of the year? Might change some flexibility with that schedule?
What we noticed, that this has been an extremely dry year, that the weather conditions now are just as extreme as they were in October and November.
Right.
For that reason, we did start earlier this year, and with public service announcements, we've done at least one press conference to bring the attention to property owners that the conditions are severe, and that the Fire Department will be moving quickly to get these inspections done.
Thank you, Chief. Next question. What is our process for ensuring compliance with brush clearance? How long does it take from the moment the Fire Department deems a property out of compliance until we have the property owner comply?
That process will probably run anywhere from about three weeks, but should be in the process of contracting within one month. Everyone is inspected by the month of June. They have two weeks to comply. There's a second inspection. If the property is not in compliance, we immediately start the preparation for a bid package. A city attorney hearing is offered, and it's put out to bid.
What properties are subject to the brush clearance regulations? Are there any properties that we exempt from this requirement?
Absolutely not. All of the properties within the city limits of Los Angeles, and those properties particularly that fall within that zone of the high-fire severity zone, all are subject to the brush clearance program.
I mean, it's the same question here. Is it unusual for power lines to get knocked down during periods of high winds in Los Angeles? When a power line does go down, how likely is it to cause a fire?
It would depend greatly on the location of the power line. On days when we have high winds, the number of calls for the Fire Department escalates tremendously. Last week, we probably had calls in the afternoon, over 1,400. Many of those are wires down. Many of those may result in a secondary incident.
And just really tying them both together, real quickly, I've been told that if a fire were to break out in the hills during a period of high winds, there would not be much we could do to keep it from going all the way to the ocean. Is that accurate?
I don't think that's a very, very accurate depiction.
Good.
The Fire Department took the necessary steps, and we were all very proactive in this most recent emergency. On high-hazard days, we pre-deployed resources into those known areas where we've had traditional fire patterns and behavior. For that reason, we were able to move very, very quickly at the time of this incident. Additionally, I had members of my staff pull back the fire inspectors to augment the staff of the engine companies in that situation. We took back staff from OCD, so that we had additional dispatchers on the floor. We took all of the necessary steps in order to prepare for this type of weather and this type of fire behavior.
Councilmember Rosendahl, if I may just add to that answer that Chief Hill provided, I understand from our staff that our lines and the poles are designed to withstand winds as high as 56 miles per hour. So, this is a very resilient, very robust system, and I think we had what can only be, what can only be described as freakish winds on this particular day, and as tragic as it is that this fire occurred, I believe that throughout the city, this was the only incidence of any kind of conflagration occurring. So, I think that should give the residents of Los Angeles some degree of comfort, that the Department of Water and Power, working hand in hand in what I've come to see is a very close and productive partnership with the Fire Department. I don't think there is grounds for that kind of fear that in high winds, we're going to have widespread fires around.
Very good with that. My last question to you, Chief, is, look, my district has beautiful mountains and hillsides and canyons, and our people love living in there. When you come across a resident that is resisting, and you find them, do we get this done by June 1st, or what can I do as a council member and my constituents do as citizens to see that people get in compliance? Because if one place it starts, and you might have your act together, but you might be impacted by that, what can we do proactively right now to work with our own constituents on this?
What we would like to have constituents in your district and any of the other districts around the city that was considered in the high-fire severity zone, to have homeowners be proactive. You don't have to wait until June to clear your brush. It is actually a year-round process. We want them to take the responsibility, the personal responsibility for their property, and to maintain the brush in a manner in which will not pose a hazard to their next-door neighbors. The Fire Department will take the necessary steps. If there is any recalcitrance by a homeowner, to not hesitate and take those parcels and put them out to bid, and then make that assessment to the tax assessor for the cost.
Now, with your own eyes, you're living in your house, what should you be looking for that you want to make sure is cleaned up and doesn't create a hazard, be it in your yard or your neighbors?
One of the things that we advise homeowners to do is to not accumulate any type of combustible materials around their homes. If you have piles of wood in the wintertime, move them away from your home. Keep grassy areas free of debris, and maintain it to a low-cut condition. Try and water plants so that they maintain water saturation and that they maintain the moisture levels, so that it don't dry out and be a convenient means to communicate a fire.
In the past, we were talking about a scooper, this or that plane that could pick up the water and go quickly. Do we have them on call this time? Do we have any access to those planes?
Those, we have not begun our contracting for the super scoopers and that type of aircraft as of yet. Usually, that's later on in the year, and those things are handled by the county, but we will be partnering, as we've done in the past, to make sure that all of our air resources are in place for this year.
So, God forbid it were to happen tonight, could we get access to those planes and bring them in?
I don't think those planes are here on the ground at this time, but we will be making the necessary phone calls. We do have other resources- We do have other resources available. We have mutual aid agreements with LA County, and we have proved to be sufficient over the recent times that our fleet in itself will work very handily, and we'll be able to contain these fires.
So you feel comfortable that if we were to have a potential disaster right now, you could push a button and get a scooper in there, or some other plane like that?
Even though we may not have the scoopers, we do have other resources from the federal side that would be able to come in and assist us.
Great. Thank you.
Just one other comment. In the list of lessons learned?
Yeah.
I think surely this should teach us that wood roofs should be a thing of the past.
Very good, very good. Again, thank you, Jack, for your leadership on this. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Mr. Weiss, thank you, and Ms. Rosendahl, thank you. They're in Canada, and it's a contract. But here's the question. Five great distinguished members, one appointed commissioner there. What's the worst season of the year for fire in the brush zone, historically?
Historically, we've had some of our worst occasions in the month of January.
And November, with the Bel Air Fire, all that there, but, you know, November, I'm just saying. And there's a reason, there's a calendar reason, and I know the climate is changing, whatever the case be, but it's also gonna grow back, so you have to balance all that issue out. I have that question on the Santa Monica Mountains and the national properties, and state properties in the Santa Monica Mountains, et cetera. What requires, because there was a story recently about them on brush clearance in the last couple of years. They comply, right?
We work very closely with the Santa Monica Conservancy. I think that's the agency that you're referring to.
Right.
To make sure that their properties are brought into compliance as well. I've had conversations in recent weeks to make sure that they are aware of that we need to increase their efforts, and we want to make sure that their brush on their properties does not pose an exposure to any of the private properties around their areas.
Now, can I just ask a question? On the wires, if a wire's hit each other on a pole, they could arc, right? So it either could be the wind could push the wires together? Is that correct, Mr. Martinez?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, let's see, we call it face-to-face contact.
Face-to-face, face-to-face with the wires. And then they could then fall down and then start a fire, if not?
Yeah, they'll spark, get overheated, and then eventually break and create sparks around the fault.
Now, in this incident here, which is unusual, and I could think it's a very unusual time that we're living in in Los Angeles, whether, there's reality of the global warming and climate change, but there's also a reality of all the difference, you know? And Mr. Rosendahl asked a question about, you know, with the fire, yes, if there was, if there was no, when the fire started in Montana 100 years ago, it burned to the Pacific Ocean, depending on what the winds blow. It's personnel together with water that stops fire, and our helicopters. You love the super scooper bill, but the helicopters, the Ericsson crane, which we lease, is a very important tool. In 45 seconds, they went into Lake Hollywood, scooped up water over 2,500 gallons, or 4,500 gallons.
2,500 gallons.
And went right into Griffith Park, was able to drop it in the open reservoirs. They also used Silver Lake at a fire they had in Glendale, so that's an important asset that we have there. I just want to thank you for this work. Want to thank you for the Hollywood Hills fire that originated on the backside of Coinga Peak and the effort that took place there. I always tell the Water and Power Department, the Fire Department, I always tell them, Mr. President, to thank the Water and Power Department, because without the water, they can't put out the fire. And so it's so important. But all this is so important to have. It's emergency preparedness, it's brush fire preparedness, it's all that so important in those messages. The one thing I did have to say, well, a fallen wire on the ground has the potential to cause fire, whether it's in the hillside or in the Wilshire District, wherever it is. And when they call the Fire Department 911, the fire come out, but they can't touch the 4,800 volts, right, Henry?
That's correct.
So what should the citizen do?
Well, first of all, I'm sorry, I think power lines being down is definitely take the safety precautions, do not come near it, number one.
Stay away.
Stay away, and treat it as a live wire. I mean, I think that's one of the biggest concerns that we have, and personnel coming close to it or walking around it, and we just want to keep them away from there.
Right. But we have communication between the Water Department, Power Department, LA Fire Department, so that the right crews get out right at time. People are more concerned about stop the arcing. There was an incident on Rosmar, that it was overnight, that they had arcing wires. Fire Department did come out twice, but crews were working, and it was stretching. And I'm not laying any blame on anybody. But if it's something that's arcing, we should hit that first before we try to put power back on, for the safety of a community.
That is correct.
Okay, good. And Mr. Nahai, thank you again for your service to the public. Chief, Captain, thank you. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very much. Well, one of the things that I'd like to clarify is, did I just hear a little earlier that this is the only incident of its kind in the recent high winds that we had just recently? At least in our DWP area?
It was, it was the only incident of fires getting sparked that has come to my attention.
And whose wires were they that sparked it? Who owned those?
The, I think it's clear that the wire, the line, is a DWP line.
Okay. The reason why I ask that question is because my next question is about, around figure, Henry, about how many miles of power lines do we have traversing the city?
I would say, just a guess, about 8,000 miles.
About 8,000 miles?
It's a very, it's a large system, yes.
Yeah. And this wind is an act of nature, right? It's not something that we can predict on a given day or what have you. It comes and goes. We get the warning from the weather reports or what have you, we've got high winds coming, or storms, or lightning, or what have you, right?
Correct.
I think this was the, the kind of intensity and speed with which this particular windstorm hit us was, I think we would all agree, aberrational.
Yeah, exactly, because I live in the San Fernando Valley, and it was pretty bad out there. The reason why I'm asking this question is because my next question is, has anybody at the Department of Water and Power ever, to date, told the people of Los Angeles, and we have power lines that go beyond the city limits, but at least the city, the people of Los Angeles are within our basin here, that such a thing could not ever happen?
No, of course not.
Okay. I know, Mr. Nahai, I know you're kind of looking at me, kind of like, well, that's a silly question.
No, not at all.
It's pretty, no, 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 it's a pretty mundane question, but the reason why I ask that is because when you have 8,000 miles of power lines, and then we have an incident like this, my next question is, are we taking this incident lightly? Are we investigating what happened? Are we trying to figure out best practices, whether we're following them or not, or what we can do better? Are we learning from this?
Oh, I think that, I think we definitely are. This is why, even without the investigations being complete, we have, in conjunction with the Fire Department, already changed protocols to make them weather-related, to accelerate the brush clearance, not only at Franklin Canyon, but also at our other 13 major properties. There, right now, not only is the Fire Department investigating this incident, but we're investigating it internally, and we've made a report to our insurance company, which certainly will also look into the matter. We're taking it very seriously. Our hearts go out to the residents who lost their home, and to the others who had fire damage. And I said, there are lessons to be learned here. We have to, we have to learn that our climate is capable of very high winds, something that we, I think we could not have foreseen. I think we also have to learn that wood roofs will go up in flames at the slightest provocation. And we need to start to think a little bit about building differently as well, now that we know that these things, these things can happen. But regarding the DWP's responsibility, and this, Councilmember, we've said time and again, and we reiterate here today, we're not going anywhere. We view our responsibilities with the utmost seriousness, and if these investigations that are going on determine at the end of it that we were, that we felt short in any way, we will live up to our responsibilities. I want the homeowners to be assured of that.
The reason why I ask that question is because I think it's important for people to note, whatever you hear in the papers doesn't mean that that's the end of the scenario, or what you hear in the papers that the DWP, for example, in a situation like this, doesn't have a comment, or their comment is very short. That is the court of public opinion. Here is the place in which our democracy exists and breathes, and where answers need to be made to our constituents, to the public, officially and appropriately. And I appreciate the detail in which you answered those questions, and assuring everybody that we will get down to the bottom of this, and we will have better practices, and we are taking this seriously, just like every incident I've seen the DWP take as of late. My point is, I think it's important for people to understand that I just wish more people watched this dialogue than read the papers, because unfortunately, what I saw was a lot of finger-pointing and not very many answers, or not much responsibility of what the responsible nature in which you're practicing today. So that's why I just wanted to have this dialogue, just to assure people, this is now on the record. This has been video-recorded. They can play your comments over and over and over and over again, and I want them to, because I think they were responsible, I think they were accurate, and I appreciate you being forthright in assuring us that we are taking it seriously. My last point is this. Is there anything that precludes the Department of Water and Power to give a report like this on many areas, but specifically on our power line structure and/or potential liabilities, and/or where we're at as far as meeting our responsibilities of caretaking for them so that we minimize more and more and more the possibility of these things happening? Is there anything that precludes the Department from reporting to this body, the Council of Los Angeles?
Not at all, and...
Do you welcome doing that more often, Henry, Mr. Nahai?
Definitely, yes.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your questions.
Mr. Weiss is our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam President. One other item, colleagues, I just want to alert you to, and Mr. Reyes, I don't, I think you were still out when the motion went in last week. It'll come to your committee. Another aspect of this motion calls on DWP, on DWP, Building and Safety, to report on the status issues relating to wood shake roofs in the City of Los Angeles. Because the one fact that all three of those homes had in common, it burned last week, was they all had wood roofs. And we have a law that's been in place for a number of years in the City of Los Angeles that deals with retrofitting when someone is fixing up their roof, then there's a requirement that they move to something other than wood. But it's interesting to see that Beverly Hills has a different requirement. Beverly Hills is actively, actually proactively requiring people to replace their wooden roofs. And a good time to get an assessment of just how extensively wood shake roofs remain in the City of Los Angeles, where they're located, and maybe we might want to come up with something. For example, Mr. Reyes, I'm speaking to you now because we can't, once it's in committee, but here we can, because the matter is agendized here. We may want to consider talking with the Fire Department of Building and Safety about whether, at least in those areas that have been designated as red flag zones, whether those areas ought to be subject to more stringent requirements with respect to wood roofs. And then you get into all sorts of issues of economics and equity, and we don't want to be a burden on people. On the other hand, I can just tell you, I saw these houses last week, the ones next door didn't burn. The ones with the wood roofs, they're gone. And we need to think about doing something. Thank you all again.
Thank you so much.
Now, we can't talk. Do you want to talk?
Mr. Zine.
Hold on, not done yet. I thought we were done, but they didn't call me. Anyway, just a couple of questions on the areas that we have posted, no parking, red flag alert. Is that working out? And were any of those areas involved in this fire that took place?
No.
Where we have those zones in the areas where you can't park on red flag days, any of those areas involved?
None of those areas were involved, Counsel.
Were any of those areas involved in the previous fire, Universal?
In the Hollywood Hills, I'm not certain about that, but that would be very close up around Nicholas Canyon and those areas.
I'm trying to find if we're getting compliance with that, since we're talking about fires, and it's windy today, and it's gonna be summertime, we don't have any water in the vegetation. The other question I have is on the roofs that we're talking about. I thought they were banned in the City of Los Angeles many years ago.
That's correct.
How many years ago?
I believe that ordinance dates back to around 1990 in its final form, so we've had that ordinance in place now for approaching 20 years. And it's pretty much stipulates that you cannot have a combustible roof installed on a resident, and as well, if you have it, it is limited to a 10% repair.
Okay. And a question for Water and Power. The power lines, are power lines intersect with other cities? Beverly Hills, Cobra City, Pasadena, are there, are there LA City power lines?
They don't intersect directly, but they're joining some of the power lines adjacent to other utilities.
And the particular tragedy that happened in Beverly Hills, were those, was that on LA City property or Beverly Hills property, with our lines or their lines or mutual lines?
The way that we understand the, it was our power line on city property, or private property but on city, on the city land. The neighborhood that was affected was on a Beverly Hill side, not on city property. And I understand that the embers were carried far down the hill into Beverly Hills.
In the event that a situation occurs where a power line falls in Beverly Hills, is it their power line, or is it our power line?
It would be Edison's power line.
Edison, so liability would then be with Edison?
Correct.
Okay. Because I know we've got power lines all over the place.
Yes.
And has there ever been an attempt to do the underground utility lines in the Mountain Fire District areas like they do in some other communities? Newer communities like Mr. Smith's area up in Granada Hills, Porter Ranch area, they're all underground. Have they ever made an attempt to do underground utility lines in those areas? The canyon areas where we have a lot of vegetation?
I'm not aware directly, however, as you know, there's an underground district that the City Council can designate.
And there's a what?
Underground district. There's an ordinance that allows the City Council to designate underground districts throughout the City of Los Angeles that will require utilities to go underground. But that's a process that is well documented and is up to the approval of the City Council.
And is this a common occurrence where a power line falls on vegetation and we have a fire breakout?
Not necessarily. It is still dependent on the circumstances, the weather, the conditions of the area, and the voltage of the power line.
So we may want to explore the possibility of, because I represent Woodland Hills and Tarzana, where we have a lot of residents, the Mountain Fire District, vegetation, et cetera, to explore that possibility of the utilities being placed underground. So I know they're doing it in other parts of my district, in the flatlands, but it seems an area that could benefit from that would be the Mountain Fire area. I know everything from Ventura Boulevard to Sunset Boulevard, part of that Santa Monica Mountain Fire District, where that hazard exists. And I remember the Bel Air Fire, I think it was 500 and some homes.
It was huge.
You were just a child back then, Chief, but I remember it. Thank you.
Councilmember, let me just add one thought. The details of what exactly happened here that resulted in the tragedy, this is, this is what is under investigation right now. And so, because you asked a number of questions about, about just exactly what had transpired here, and I just wanted to make sure that we, that we answer it even more fully by saying that we are awaiting the Fire Department's conclusion, our own internal investigations, and then, and then we'll have a much fuller picture as to exactly what happened here, and where, if any, responsibility would have to rest.
And I think what we're also concerned with is to prevent anything in the future, so whatever we can do to make prevention, because I know that that area is tinder-dry. The area surrounding the Hollywood Hills, the area Tarzana, Encino, that entire area is very, very dry, and it doesn't look like it's gonna have any moisture for the upcoming future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to thank you for your hard work, and I know there's a lot of pressures every day in responding to emergencies, but the bottom line for me is, I have significant number of structures that are on hillsides, the older hills in the city, right around downtown, for the most part, probably do have wooden roofs. Another dynamic exists that majority of those houses and pockets of these neighborhoods, like in Lincoln Heights, the owners don't live in them, they rent out those facilities, their homes. To me, the issue of how we get community involved, especially in the low-income and moderate-income areas, to participate, since it's not their home, and the concern for the wooden roof might not be as grave as the owner who would live in it. So I'm asking you, as a Fire Department, as a Water and Power, are there any other examples or any other programs in which we're able to bring in community participation that allows to identify conditions, and like in this case, would be wooden roofs, where we could perhaps use the neighborhood councils, or other networks, or social groups? could perhaps use the neighborhood councils or other networks or, or social groups that can help identify these wooden roofs? And I'm just kind of riding the coattails of Councilor Weiss and, and trying to establish what is that number and, and how vulnerable are we because of these wooden roofs? Can you respond?
Do you want to respond first, Chief?
We will, the Fire Department and Department of Building and Safety will be immediately acting upon this motion and conducting some type of survey to try and establish in the particular neighborhoods the number and the amount of roofs that are going to be affected by this. From there, I think your suggestion is, is appropriate, recognizing there's economic conditions associated with having a roof repaired and/or, in this case, replaced. It would be most certainly something to explore with the neighborhood council or other community groups that could help deflect or, or do something in terms of cost to, to get it done.
So to identify the roofs, essentially just going through the permit process and understanding what was built when and the likelihood of it being wooden is going to be very straightforward because of the data we have already. So that, that's, that's the assumption I'm making, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. But to pay for it, that's a whole other dynamic, that's a whole other issue in terms of how we approach that.
I agree.
Okay.
I, I was just advised by one of our staff members that county tax records may actually tell us which homes or structures have, have wood roofs. But, but I think, and I completely understand the, the economic burden, and then one certainly doesn't want to impose that, especially on moderate and low income families. But, but perhaps as we go through the process and we take a fresh look at this, we can perhaps prioritize wood roofs in hillside areas, wood roofs that are in the, in proximity to brush areas that haven't been cleared. I think, I think in dense urban areas where there really isn't very much brush around, perhaps those would fall in a, in a lesser category. But I think planning long-term, given the fact that we see that wood roofs are just more conducive to combustion than other types of roofs, we, we need to start, I think, societally, thinking seriously about how we move towards incrementally getting rid of them. Because people's lives are at stake, and we're, we're very fortunate that we didn't have any loss of life or, or injury in these fires that occurred.
I agree with you, but time and time again, I've had the experience where we have a citywide effort, the Red Flag Program was a, was a great example. In one part of town, they went through a process of community meetings, actually gathering information, and alerted everyone that this was going to occur. In, in my district, we, they just sprang up overnight, we did not even know what the polls were there for, and it was a real hard time trying to regroup. Thanks to the Fire Department, I mean, certain captains took their meetings at the community meetings, but we did not take the same approach, did not put the same investment and time in how we treated people. And the only difference is that in parts of my district, we're not as wealthy, it's not as, as, as quote unquote desirable for some, and, and we had a difference in how the city treated this part of town. So that's why I'm asking that question, because the equity issue is very real, and, and I'm glad that we're able to approach it methodically, and I hope to see that's done fairly as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Labonte, our last speaker on this item.
Followed by Mr. Zine said on underground, and I think I'm going to come in with a motion, Ms. Perry, ask that our committee look at that in more of a, a way that would get it going again, because it was something that we started to do years ago and with Prop 13, and we stopped tremendously, and we should. Might I make that comment? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonte. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here this morning.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Clerk, if we could please go to item number 11, Mr. Parks. I know we have submitted a amending motion that is before us. Mr. Parks?
Also, yes, come to committee.
Item number 11, we have, I know it's just, we've distributed a amending motion, I don't think there's much other discussion on this item.
The amending motion basically corrects a number of issues and also adds what was discussed today in committee, in the council, and so we ask for an aye vote so that we can move the monthly status report forward.
Mr. Alakon, did you have a question about this one, or were you going to our next item?
45.
No, we're on item number 11.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Madam Clerk, oh, Mr. Weiss, item 11.
Yeah, and I, I would just ask, because this is a matter that's still under discussion between the mayor's...
This is budget and finance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would just ask, because this is still a matter that is under discussion between the mayor's office, the CIO, and the LAPD, that we amend Alternative 5 of the CIO's financial status report and delete the transfer of the Homeland Security Phase 2 for the LAPD in the amount of $1.155 million to the Reserve for Economic Uncertainties and authorize the controller to make any technical adjustments to implement this recommendation.
Is that a friendly amendment, Mr. Parks?
The dilemma with that is I think the mayor's office has swept that into next year's budget, if that's Phase 2, so that's going to be taken up, I believe, in the budget. But I think that was swept by the mayor's office, at least from the last meeting we had with him.
I guess, I'm, I'm now being informed otherwise, and so in an exercise of caution, I would like to unsweep it. I'll talk with them and the CIO and confirm, but I've, I've just been told otherwise.
Somebody from the mayor's office here, because I think that was the last we, we got from the mayor's budget.
Do we have anyone from the mayor's office present?
Why don't we just do this, hold it for a moment and...
Okay, we'll hold it on the table. Okay. Next item.
Item 8 was called special for Councilmember Zine, and an amending motion has been circulated.
Okay, well, ask, Mr. Zine, I think we have the chair of the committee then to you, Mr. Zine, and Mr. Reyes is asked to speak briefly then, Mr. Zine.
We pulled that amending motion as I, that amending motion's been withdrawn.
Okay, withdrawn.
On that particular matter, and I understand from the city attorney's office that there needs to be a hearing on this development agreement, that we've come to an agreement, affordable senior housing component in this particular district of my community. So if we could have the city attorney's office come forward on this particular matter, as I understand, that Mr. Reyes and I have briefed, been briefed by the city attorney, and it...
Yes, and we'll recognize, I think Mr. Reyes had wanted it kind of from the Plum perspective first, and then we'll come to you, if that's all right with you, Mr. Zine. Okay?
Open the door on it, but pull that amending motion though.
The amending motion's been withdrawn.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Zine. Colleagues, this has been a rather extraordinary case, but it's fairly direct. The Warner Center specific plan project permit approval report was approved by the city on May 17, 2004, and will expire June 4, 2007. What this particular development agreement allows us to extend the project permit entitlements to June 1, 2012. The subject site is at 6200 6257 North DeSoto Avenue. It's a 707 unit multiple family housing complex comprised of a maximum of 312 senior citizen dwelling units, of which 10% are targeted to be affordable. Colleagues, this has been a project that has been worked through with the council office, it has support from the Planning Commission, a whole range of advocates and stakeholders because of its ability to bring together probably one of the largest senior complexes and housing facilities to date. And the fact that the developer is participating and cooperating with 10% being affordable is part of the dynamics of the development agreement. So I would like to recommend an aye vote on this, and would allow for any questions if I'd be out there for our city attorney, and again, congratulations, Councilmember Zine, in going through rather stormy waters, but hopefully getting this through today and, and moving forward to much-needed housing that is required here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Zine, you have some questions, are you ready to vote on this item?
I'm ready to have the city attorney comment on the legal standard that we have to adhere to on this matter.
Yes, well, just, we need a clarification on the ordinance, the terms of the ordinance. There was some discussion about changes. It appears that now what's in front of you is the one that came out of Plum. The government code does require a public hearing on this, so if there are any speaker cards, I don't know if there are or not, you're required to hold a public hearing. Otherwise, if there aren't any, then, then go ahead and vote on it. It's an ordinance.
There are three cards, I mean, so there had been a public hearing in Plum, but you're saying we are required as well to have one here?
Yes.
Okay. We do have three speaker cards, so we will go to public comment. I'd like to ask Ben Resnick, RJ Comer, and Richard Weintraub, and if you choose not to speak, you can let us know that as well. Mr. Resnick?
There's one more. There's one more card from Liz Smogala.
I do not have it in front of me, but if there's been a, I'll ask the Sergeant in Arms if they do have an additional card that has not been presented to us. Ms. Resnick.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Ben Resnick with Jeffrey Mangles, Butler, and Marmaro, and I'm here representing a neighbor of this project four blocks away, Sims Commercial Development. My point and reason I'm, I'm elected to address you today, it's a little awkward, is strictly because of the fact that our client recently went through an approval for a 438-unit apartment project four blocks from here. The requirement was a 25% unsubsidized affordable housing requirement. It came out of Plum just a couple, yesterday, or I guess it was, at 15% proposal, and today you're being asked to approve a project that's offering less than, it's about 4%. I know that it was presented to you as 10%, but it's 10% of the senior component. The rest of the project is all market rate, there are 707 units. So what's before you today is a 4% affordable housing project, and the reason I raise it is simply for parity and, and to, to be able to ask the council to be sensitive to the fact that when I'm here in two days, on Friday, with Mr. Sims' project, that the council weigh today's decision and vote on how you treat Mr. Sims' requirements. The entitlements that this developer currently has before you expire in June, and what the city is doing is giving him a development agreement to extend that. Under the code, you can't extend it, so this tactic or this strategy of using a development agreement, we don't think is, is appropriate. And the reason that's relevant to Mr. Sims is because in Warner Center, if you're under 3,000 units approved, you don't have to comply with the affordable housing requirements and the trip fee requirements. And it is this project before you today that's eating up, if you will, a lot of these units. So our client has to get hit with these requirements because we end up exceeding the 3,000 unit number. So we have a direct conflict, and as such, we ask that a special privilege not be granted today. What is the public benefit if you're getting 4%? Thank you.
Thank you very much. The other woman, RJ wants to speak, okay. RJ Comer, and did you submit a new card in, ma'am? Do you still want to speak? Okay, we'll let RJ speak and you can speak after him. Please, go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is RJ Comer. I'm a partner at Armbruster and Goldsmith, and I represent the applicant in this development agreement before you today. I appreciate the remarks made by Councilmember Reyes. What I really appreciate is the remarks made by the Planning Commission, which gave unanimous approval to this development agreement and congratulated this developer. With our current planning commission, you don't see that very often, where every single planning commissioner votes in favor of a development agreement and enthusiastically thanks the developer for agreeing to not only build 312 senior living units, the largest senior living project I know of in the city of Los Angeles, but also adding 10% of those senior living units to be affordable. Now, you just heard that that's really not the case, that it's really 4% of the, of the total package, but that's not what the planning commission asked for. The planning commission specifically asked, can you make the senior living units affordable? Can you make 10% of them affordable? The answer is yes. You have to understand that the economics of a senior living facility is different than the economics of a, of a market rate project. This is a Type 1 construction project with lots of amenities for these seniors. Senior living, even without affordable, is a much different, much more expensive thing to build, and we're adding the affordable, and that is a significant public benefit. I want to respond to the parity issue. These are two different projects, and, and Council for the Sims project said it himself. What this is really about is trying to knock out a project ahead of the Sims project so they can slide into the Phase 1 position and not do any affordable for the city. If this development agreement is not approved, the city will get no senior living units, no senior living affordable units, and no affordable units in the Sims project. I'd like to read into the record an email received from Council, from Council for Sims to my partner, Mark Armbruster, and he said, and I'm not reading the whole email, I'd be happy to pass out the whole email, but he said, "If we are stuck with the 25%, then if REW fails to get its DA approved and its entitlements expire, then the Sims project gets to move forward under the old regulations without the need to provide any set aside." Thank you, and if you'd like this email, happily pass it out.
Thank you. Mr. Weintraub, do you want to speak, and then Liz Smogala?
I think I'll keep it brief for the two minutes. I want to say that this project today, unlike everyone else in Warner Center, and Mr. Sims included, everyone's been trying to sell their project, and I've been fighting for years to keep this project. This is the culmination of about 15 years of understanding the desperate need for senior housing in Los Angeles, which is going to get more and more desperate as time goes on. When Father Kezios offered and asked me if I wanted to do 10% of the project for affordable, I accepted in the spirit which it was offered. And this project is very much of a social experiment in that it is an extraordinary seniors project which is offering very unusual amenities that have never been offered in seniors projects anywhere in the United States. I want to thank Councilman Zine for recognizing this, and I would like to thank the council for recognizing, and the Planning Commission, the importance of having senior housing in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Liz.
Liz Smogala, Jeffrey Mangles, Butler, and Marmaro, on behalf of Sims Commercial Development, I just want to point out that the REW DeSoto Partners entitlements do expire on June 4 of this year, and what they're trying to do is use an, use an unusual mechanism to extend their entitlements. That's not allowed under the Los Angeles municipal code. According to the Department of City Planning Recommendation Report for this project, the public benefit to the city has to equal the benefit being given to the applicant. Here, the applicant is really receiving all of the benefit, they're getting an extension that they're not usually entitled to, whereas the public is receiving a 4.38% housing set aside. Now, how is that a public benefit when our client, four blocks down the street, was originally asked to provide 25% as a mitigation measure? We wouldn't usually be standing up here arguing against another project, we're just asking that our client be treated fairly, and we submit that there is no public benefit that the city is getting here. If these entitlements just expire, REW DeSoto Partners has to reapply and then would be subject to the interim procedures and would arguably also have to give 25% or 15%. In any case, probably more than 4.38%. I just ask that you look at these two projects and how they relate to each other, and I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes public hearing, public comment. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. The specific plan for Warner Center originally said by 2010, we'd have 3,000 residential units. We reached that before 2010, and that's why a new specific, or an interim control procedure takes effect after that 3,000, and that is going to take effect for any additional units. The Weintraub project does not call for, in the plan, under the 3,000 cap, to do anything affordable and do anything for seniors. Mr. Weintraub has agreed to do that. That is a public benefit, since we have a number of seniors that need residence, and it's also a benefit when there's senior housing at a discount. So we have that in this, in this plan. The issue of one project versus another project, this project is a Type 1 project, a senior component, affordable senior component, which is under the cap of the 3,000. Any additional projects that come forward are going to have to comply with the procedure that we put forward in this city council that mandated that they do senior housing, that mandated that that be part of the project. This Weintraub development is simply giving us a benefit for seniors and giving us a benefit for affordable senior housing, which he is not obligated to do because he falls under the plan, under the 3,000 cap. So there's a distinction between the 3,000 number and what's going to happen with any other future projects that come forward, they're going to have to comply with what the interim control ordinance, procedure states, that there's got to be mandatory a senior component, and there's got to be the compliance with that, and that's the issue that is being argued. One is before, one is after. Weintraub project, this development agreement is going to permit them to do what we need, senior affordable housing in Warner Center, which is desperately needed. At the same time, we are doing an update on the specific plan for Warner Center, which isn't completed yet, and that specific plan update will give us new direction into the future, what we're going to do with Warner Center. And the last thing I want to do in Warner Center is to turn it into a total residential community and destroy any commercial properties that we have. That's one of the conditions that's going to be coming out with the specific plan, so we can maintain the job-housing balance in Warner Center. And we know that the rents in Warner Center are extremely high, too high for most, for most seniors, and this will assist the seniors in having affordable quality housing in the West San Fernando Valley, which we have a lot of senior amenities. So we would ask that this council approve this development agreement for this particular project in Friday, then we'll discuss that until, under a new condition, it's under a... project on Friday. Then we'll discuss that under a new condition. It's under a temporary procedure that has conditions attached, which do not apply to this particular development agreement, which we're discussing, and I ask for your eye vote on this matter. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
Next item. I think we'll go, I don't know if number 11 doesn't seem like it's quite completed. We'll go to item number 25.
Item 25 was called special by councilmembers Parks and Alakon.
Mr. Alakon or Mr. Parks, this is item number 25.
And there also has been an amending motion. It's been circulated.
Okay. We're on 25, unless you wanted us to do 11 really quick, if we resolved that, but...
If we could just, we could do it, but I think Mr. Weiss is talking with the mayor's office.
Okay, item 25.
Could we have department staff come up on 25? Thank you very much.
Good afternoon.
The reason I call this special is a couple of things. One, regarding the article that came out, which I think in some instances misrepresented the whole historical perspective of how some of these grants and funds come into the department, and you might explain to the council and Channel 35 exactly the historical perspective of some of these kinds of donations, how they're used, and also how there is a somewhat of an arms-distance approach in not letting private companies pay for more services, but certainly zeroing in on things that have certain interests of them.
Sure. Well, and I guess one of the great examples that I could talk about is Hollywood. The article referenced the camera system, the $87,000 that were donated to put in that camera infrastructure. That was done by the Business Improvement District, who actually, working in partnership with the Police Department and who pay for private security in their district, came up with other ideas on how to leverage resources. This was being done in other parts of the country, and they got their committee together and voted on it and decided they wanted to allocate some of their security budget to install these cameras and then send the signal to the police so that they could use them to help build more resistance in the community.
Let me ask you, in that example, were those cameras donated to the department, or are those cameras owned and operated by the bid?
They're owned and operated by the bid, but there was equipment that was donated and installed in the police station in terms of monitoring and storing the digital data, and that was a donation that was accepted through the process and through a system of review to withstand the scrutiny of the public, where it goes through the Police Department, goes to the commission, is reviewed by the city attorney, goes through the Public Safety Committees, and ultimately council. And so, in this case before us today, the Philip Morris donation, that case, there was an investigation ongoing. It fit the criteria of major crimes, which has to do with individuals involved in criminal networks that may have tentacles into the national, international community. However, while that investigation was going on, Philip Morris contacted the division and said that they had programs to help support law enforcement, but would need a letter asking for support.
Would you repeat that?
Yes.
They made the offer?
Philip Morris contacted the police initially and said that, just like Target, Target has programs that they outreach to the community and to law enforcement across the nation. Philip Morris contacted the Police Department, said, "We have programs to support investigations such as this. We just need a letter," you know, stating that. So the letter was drafted. Philip Morris offered the donation. It was reviewed through the chain of command, through the Police Commission, reviewed by the city attorney to make sure that it complied with all the restrictions of donations in this type of event. And then it went through our subcommittees here in the council, and now it's at the council.
Okay. And then you mentioned there's been others. I think there was something dealing with real estate fraud years ago, and there's others. Could you comment on some of the others that are within the department and have been there for a long while?
I'm sorry, councilman, as far as...
The other types of grants or funding we've received for these unique kinds of enforcement activities?
Yeah, I mean, historically, there have been donations made to further the investigation. I mean, this, as an example of this, is that this just doesn't look into the counterfeit cigarette industry. This reaches far deeper and to greater tentacles in criminal enterprises, but it's a tool that we use to develop good prosecutable cases. There are other investigations in the history that deal in investigations of similar nature involving organized crime and that type of thing.
Okay. And I think Mr. Zine brought up in public safety, the issue that in many instances, people give donations to the explorer posts from local commands, and the conflict was that it appeared to be a straight donation, but the receipt or the, I guess the receipt reflected it was for security work. And those were the kinds of conflicts that were identified, that if it were a straight donation and they received it for that intent, the receipt should be consistent with a straight donation, but if it's for security, then it should be basically reflected that they actually did something for the donation or did something for the service. So is that something that has come up in this instance, that committee meeting, to resolve some of those issues?
You know, Mr. Chalif is here to talk about the donation process. I'm not familiar with that particular donation. I'm here really talking about the Philip Morris donation.
Philip Morris, okay.
Yes, sir. We are, as I've stated, we will review the processes to ensure that donations are really donations and only donations, and not, nobody expects anything in return other than the goodwill of having done a good deed.
Okay. And then the issue that comes up also is, and I think this is where there's maybe a misunderstanding. Shalef, you deal with the Police Foundation?
Yes, sir.
And they make, they raise money, and in raising money, they then buy equipment and contributed to the department. And the expectation is that once it's contributed, it then comes over to the city council for acceptance?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, the thing, the second reason I brought this up was the issue that we have had a number of times brought to our attention, if you look at the website of the Police Foundation, there's a number of things that have been funded, and it's unclear whether they've all been accepted. And I'm just want to verify that everything that's been brought to the foundation and purchased, gone through the commission, and basically been brought to the city council for acceptance.
Everything that the foundation donates to the department goes through the same city-mandated requirements of going through the commission, going through the Public Safety Committee, and coming here. The foundation may put on their website things they have granted that haven't been through the process yet, but they consider them grants. That doesn't mean that the department has not fulfilled its requirement of quarterly filing with the commission and then the council.
Okay. So you don't handle grants or donations any differently?
No.
Okay. Then one of the issues, just to comment on, is that, and we passed colleagues a document that identifies the administrative code that talks about the requirements, and I think it lays it out that anything over $10,000 must be brought forward. And so the final reason, bringing this up, is that maybe a year or so ago, the department was asked about some consulting contracts and what the end product was of the consulting contracts. Those have never been brought to the council, even though they're the product of the contribution. And so that motion is still outstanding. We're still waiting for that material, and I think there's some confusion that the commission can approve these things without coming to the council. So we'd like to have you respond to that also.
I think, I'm not an expert on this and probably have to seek advice from the city attorney, but the consultants that the foundation hired, worked for the, had a contract with the foundation, if there was work product created that was provided to the commission pursuant to their rules. My understanding was the council could take jurisdiction over any commission action pursuant to Rule 245, but I'd have to consult with the city attorney about whether or not every consulting report, whether it went through, whether it was acted on by the commission or not, would have to be approved by the council. I'll have to check with the city attorney.
There's two things. One, I don't believe any of those reports ever came to the commission for us to have the ability to 245 them.
Well, then I will check into that.
And the other issue that comes up is that when these foundations were established, it was an agreement with the CLA, the CAO, and the council that they would never be used to bypass the issue of the city's rules on contracts, the city's rules on RFPs, and going out for bids. And so that's another issue for sole sourcing or having those issues. And so if you could get back to us and let us know what happened to that issue on the consultants, because if I remember correctly, the newspaper commented was, "The commission believed their review was sufficient." And I think when you look at the administrative code, it's pretty clear it's not sufficient and that it requires the council to accept any contribution donation in such over $10,000. So if you can get back to us, we'd really appreciate it, because that's a lingering motion that's now almost two years old.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. And before we go to our next speaker, Mr. Parks, we seem to be okay on item 11. What I'd like to do is go ahead and hold on the desk this item 25 and vote on item 11. You've made your presentation. The amending motion is out there. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll on item 11, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
That item has been approved.
Fourth with.
Fourth with. Thank you, Mr. Parks. We'll go back to the other item. I think Alakon was our next speaker.
All right. Madam President and colleagues, I call this item special because I just, I have a problem with a large corporation like Philip Morris being requested to make a contribution. There's two problems I have. One, the perception that if you have wealth and can pay for security, that we will provide some additional or special service to you. Because, you know, my mom, if you call my mom and, you know, asked if she would pay $50,000 to get special security, I don't think, I don't think that would happen. Or the people that I represent in the Northeast San Fernando Valley. The second concern I had was relative to the letter from the chief, which basically says, in essence, I think, and if I'm misinterpreting, please weigh in, that if you give us this contribution, we'll be better able to enforce this particular investigation or pursue this investigation, which benefits the company that's giving the donation. That just struck me in the wrong way. So I introduced an amendment that would dedicate $50,000 out of my own pot, and just for full disclosure, I'm not going to put any of my colleagues on the spot, but since there was a vacancy in my district, at the councilman's position, there was a savings of at least $50,000, so I have no problem dedicating that to the 7th Council District, saying, hey, we can buy extra service too, and we have a serious gang problem in the Northeast San Fernando Valley. And so my amendment would simply dedicate $50,000 and like to have the Police Department come back and tell me how they would like to use that $50,000. Had a conversation with Mr. Chalif and the other Police Department members, and they have said that Mr. Chalif in particular will work on improving the protocols for contributions, I think, similar to the conversation that Mr. Parks had just now, to ensure that when contributions are being given and received by the city, and in this case, the Police Department, that the department will do everything to ensure that there should be no public perception that you can buy police service, or if you get special treatment, if you can afford to pay for police service, and that whatever those protocols might be, that Mr. Chalif will come back with a report after consultation with other department officials to hopefully improve the protocols in this specific case and hopefully in the future. I think it's important that we recognize that there are sources outside the city of Los Angeles taxpayer base that will be able to generate revenue that could provide great assistance to the citizens of Los Angeles, and therefore, we shouldn't turn a blind eye to that. But I think we need to be very, very cautious to give any appearance that our Police Department is for sale to the highest bidder, or that wealthy people get served differently than non-wealthy people. And so those protocols, I think, are very important and necessary. And with that, I would, I'm convinced that the department will return with that adjusted protocol measure. And not, I apologize for the time, but just to finish my statement, not to block this particular investigation, which I think is important to the city of Los Angeles. We can still have the policy debate as we move forward on the basis of a report that Mr. Chalif has agreed to come back with. With that, I'd be happy to support this. I still want to offer my $50,000 because we need the additional police service in the 7th Council District, so I would ask the department to work with me. Oh, I would like to add an amendment that deletes the necessary, the instructions to report back to the, I would like to amend my amending motion, 25A, to delete the section regarding reporting back to city council and rather report to me and work with me to determine how to best spend that $50,000. With that, I'd like to ask Mr. Chalif to...
If I could comment, thank you. A few years ago, we had some issues about complying with all the provisions relating to donations. The department may have been a little bit longer, was not reporting them in a timely fashion. Under the leadership of Councilman Weiss and the Public Safety Committee, we straightened those issues out. I think we now have established a procedure that works well and provides the council with the information required. We're constantly upgrading things so that we can do it better. This one, because of the unique nature of it, as expressed by Commander Downing, was a little different because Philip Morris came to us and offered us, and what they really said was, just send us a letter saying, please give it to us, and then we will give it to you. And that sort of was a little different. The majority of the contributions, which are usually through the foundation and others, are either for safety equipment or other type of equipment or goods that help the department or its personnel perform better, are done through the process. As I said, this one was a little unusual because of the nature of the grant. And as Commander Downing said, there are other corporations out there like Target and others who, because of the need across the country for public safety, not just one area, and realizing the budget issues of municipalities, have offered grants and money in various forms to help their communities. So I think Philip Morris, as Target and others, they're there to help their communities. They're not there to retrieve something unique for themselves.
Next speaker, Mr. Rosenbaum.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just quickly, for the record, I need to get some clarity here. In the Pacific Palisades, early in my position here as an elected official, they came to me and said, "We need a cop up here. We don't have an officer up here, and we're willing to pay for it." I went to Bratton, and I said, "Hey, I need an officer." He said, "Absolutely not." He says, "Those decisions are made by manpower needs." So Philip Morris can donate 50K, but the truth is, it goes into your overall sense of responsibilities, and you move forward. So help me on that, react to that.
The answer to that is yes.
Yeah. So my Palisadians, I don't want you to be glib, Jerry. You know those people.
Having been a Palisadian for many years.
There you go. I know, you live there.
I'm not anymore. I understand the issue, and in fact, I had a conversation with one of your staff members, and the deployment of officers is a mandate of the police chiefs, and it's done based on need.
Right.
So they could donate all the money they wanted. We would still apply... So they could donate all the money they wanted, we would still apply the resources that we felt best to benefit the entire city.
So when people say, "Don't look a gift horse in the mouth," this 50 grand fits within that context, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Weiss. Off the cue, Mr. Race.
Thank you, Council President. This donation is for counterfeit? That's the reason why they're donating?
Well, that's, that's the premise of our investigation. However, the criteria for major crimes investigation is individuals involved in criminal networks that may have national and international implications. So it's a tool for us.
So a hypothetical would be that on Sixth Street, and I first want to say, when I brought this issue up, public safety, we did see a change in presence of police on Sixth Street. This is, I guess, between Loma, all the way to Bonnie Bray, next to MacArthur Park. Sixth Street is basically an open-air swap meet, where you have up to my chest goods that are being sold, including counterfeit material. So the hypothetical would be that if your protocol, or your priorities, or how you manage your, your resources, that that could be an area that we could improve upon in terms of how we do our policing. And given the fact that, as night falls, you have very brazen and some very openly gangs come through that sidewalk and collect rent from the folks who are illegally vending. Now, that's a situation that's been there for years and years and years. And we've never, as a city, taken a stand in trying to eliminate it or focus on it. I just want to understand, if we're receiving this kind of money for counterfeit, and clearly, counterfeit material is being sold, can we raise the priority for addressing that issue? Or do I, would I need to also create resources and raise funds in the foundation? I just want to get some guidance from you, because I understand you did react, but respond, but the need is so great, and it's so prevalent, and the entrenchment of the gangs here is deep, and we just seem to not take in the steps to respond to it accordingly, given its severity.
I'm very aware and understand fully the implication of the so-called lower-level crimes that deteriorate the fabric of our communities. And this is one type of investigation that will hopefully, when it's over, raise the stature of that area and resist those types of lower-level crimes, which contribute to much higher-level crimes and organizations that support those crimes.
And who would I speak to that might give me a clue as to how that improvement could occur?
Well, you could speak to me. I mean, I could talk to you about what we're doing, but, but I can't really reveal the details of our investigation.
Not right now. Believe me, not right now. But in our office, if we can at least start looking at how we're going to programmatically look at this, because it is getting worse and worse.
I'd be happy to talk to you about it.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Parks, and I just wanted to caution everyone, we're a air quorum at 10 members, so anyone, everyone who's here, you have to remain. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mrs. Yen. I'd just like to add two things. We provided you a copy of this administrative code section that outlines the responsibilities, and just like to find out, what is the timeline of coming back on a report back on this issue?
I would have to obviously talk to the city attorney, because I'm not allowed to practice law in relation to these matters, and will report back as soon as I can.
Okay. Well, let me say this.
And knowing how you are in relation to details, I'm sure you will not allow me to take forever to do it.
I realize that. But the issue, just to shorten your task, the city attorney has been reviewing this for several weeks, so it may shorten your task. And it's the city attorney, so you might call him. But I'd like to ask that we direct, report back to Budget and Finance, if we can give you two weeks, and so we can get some word back.
I don't know if I-
Because we don't do well when we say, "When I get around to it," or "As soon as I can."
I wouldn't, wouldn't say that. I don't know if I could accomplish what you want.
Let's do two weeks, and if you have a problem, come in and go to Budget and Finance. We can, pardon? I know, but I'm saying it's part of the budget process.
Can I?
Yeah, because we can bring it in within two weeks, because it shouldn't be a large item. But we will be busy, but, so if there's a delay in it, you could let us know, and we can see about an additional time. But if we can ask for two, we can report back to Budget and Finance.
I don't think that's a reasonable time period, but you're the council, and whatever you order, we will try to do.
If it's too short, just call us and let us know.
All right, thank you. So we're going to open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you. We do have a speaker, number 25. Mr. Donan, Robert Donan.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and members. My name is Robert Donan. I'm a longtime healthcare and tobacco control advocate. I'm here to come before you to ask that you reconsider on item number 25. And the reason for that is, the article hit the LA Times. The Police Commission started talking about this, I think, back in February. It went to the Police Commission the first time. It was continued. It went another week. And I frankly just think there needs to be a little bit more discourse on, on this particular item. And I think one of the things we can't forget is the intent and spirit of the master tobacco settlement monies, where the tobacco monies were supposed to be going to tobacco-related illness and tobacco-related disease, and they certainly aren't going there. And now, with, with this item coming forward, my feeling is, it would be great and wise to be able to come back and educate the Police Commission and some other folks as far as on this donation item, as far as tobacco goes. And particularly, given the fact that now for conference sponsorship for tobacco-related purposes, you know, there's a process to go. And I would just like to see this item reconsidered, have a little bit more discourse, and bring it back. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next item, Mr. Clerk. By the way, number eight, I want to go forthwith, please. Number eight, forthwith.
Item 48 was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Number 48, Mr. Parks.
One thing, I just wanted to bring this up to, just before it goes out to ordinance, and find out from the city attorney, what can we expect back in time on this ordinance? Because I think this would save us a lot of time on these motions that we keep renewing rewards at 60 days. If we can expand them to six months, it would be, I think, very helpful on the process.
I believe there could be a relatively quick turnaround. I'm going to have to be as vague as Mr. Chalif, though, on the turnaround.
About two weeks.
Two, okay, about two weeks. I like that, okay.
Let me ask the city clerk, one of the things that would be also helpful in monitoring these motions, if there's some way the system could tweak and let councils, council members know when they're about to expire a month before, it would be something that you're not allowing these things to lapse, because if at the point they are, someone is basically is due that reward, and it's not in play, I think we run into some difficulty in giving them the reward. But if we do it for six months, and there's some way of an electronic notification or something, being all the motions go through the city clerk's office, there's some way that those two things could be combined, so we report back with the ordinance, that we find out if there's a way that the council could be notified.
I'll take that back to my office.
Maybe a six-month, maybe a month in advance, and it gives you a chance to know if you want to renew it, or if it should be renewed.
All right, we take a vote on that one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 52 called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask community support on locating the suspects that were involved on May 15, 2006, at 12:30 PM, in the death of the 17-year-old Anthony Fountain Jr., who was fatally shot near 6615 South Eighth Avenue in Los Angeles. This case has been going on well over a year. The detectives, Tracy McClanahan from 77th Division, phone number 485-1383 would be the contact number. Any leads would be important to the solution to this case. If I recall, we had the parents or relatives here when we initiated this reward motion, and 60 days has passed, and we're renewing it. But we ask for any public help on this particular crime. Thank you.
Thank you. On that matter, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 62 called special by Councilmember Parks.
Number 62, Mr. Parks.
I'd like to ask department staff, we have this item in public safety the other day, and we just want to get some clarity as to the remaining $8 million that are, that's in the system. How might it be allocated? Just for those who may not be aware, basically, Northrop Grumman is putting forth effort on close to a $60 million bond fund product, and we're getting close to the end of it. And the remaining $8 million was unclear with committee as to how it's going to be spent, how it's going to be allocated, and we just wanted to get that clarified, so the council would know. Because I understand we're getting very close to expending the, almost the total amount of the, of the bond fund.
Rosa Cepeda with the Office of the CAO. The $8 million basically represents the withhold amounts on the contract.
Explain that for all those who may not know that.
For each phase of the contract, there is an approximate 10% amount of the contract that is held back and not paid to the contractor until the work is satisfactory, to the city's satisfaction. So in this case, there's a withhold on the CAD part, on the mobile part, on the integration of the two systems and cut over, and on the forms.
Okay. And that's pretty much the entire, what, $60 million was for that, plus what, the two centers? Built the, the two communication centers?
The $60 million is actually the Northrop Grumman part. The entire Prop M project included the build-out of the two centers and many other items.
So if we have $8 million on the holdbacks, it would leave very little money left for any more amendments?
That's correct.
Okay. And what would you approximate the amount that would be held if there isn't another amendment?
I'm sorry, what?
How much would be left within that $8 million if we were to have to have another amendment?
I think we have all of the money committed for.
Okay.
Provided that the system is expected to cut over and go live in June of this year.
So there's no expectation of general fund money at any time in the future?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, the issue is, this is not real money, it's basically money already committed?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
As long as it's not real money, it's okay. No other speakers on that matter. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you all. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item 43 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn back? Not here. Keep holding it then.
That would leave only the closed session items.
Can we find out her return time? I know she's on a conference call. Okay, we'll see how long it's going to be before we go into closed session, if we can clear it now. Ms. Hahn is unavailable at this moment. We're going to go into closed session on three items, and then we'll return and take that matter up at that time.[1434.33] Ms. Hahn is unavailable at this moment. We're going to go into closed session on three items, and then we'll return and take that matter up at that time. All right, we're going to go into closed session. Ms. Hahn is unavailable at this moment. We're going to go into closed session on three items, and then we'll return and take that matter up at that time. All right, we take a vote on that one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Ten ayes.
Thank you all.
Mr. President, item 43 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn back? Not here. Well, keep holding it then.
That would leave only the closed session items.
Can we find out her return time? I know she's on a conference call. Okay, we'll see how long it's going to be before we go into closed session. If we can clear it now. All right, we're going to go into closed session. Ms. Hahn is unavailable at this moment. We're going to go into closed session on three items, and then we'll return and take that matter up at that time. All right, we take a vote on that one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Mr. President, item 43 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn back? Not here. Well, keep holding it then.
That would leave only the closed session items.
Can we find out her return time? I know she's on a conference call. Okay, we'll see how long it's going to be before we go into closed session. If we can clear it now. All right, we're going to go into closed session. Ms. Hahn is unavailable at this moment. We're going to go into closed session on three items, and then we'll return and take that matter up at that time. All right, we take a vote on that one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Item 62 called special by Councilmember Parks.
Number 62, Mr. Parks.
I'd like to ask department staff, we have this item in public safety the other day, and we just want to get some clarity as to the remaining $8 million that's in the system. How might it be allocated? Just for those who may not be aware, basically, Northrop Grumman is putting forth effort on close to a $60 million bond fund product, and we're getting close to the end of it. And the remaining $8 million was unclear to committee as to how it's going to be spent, how it's going to be allocated, and we just wanted to get that clarified so the council would know. Because I understand we're getting very close to expending almost the total amount of the bond fund.
Rosa Cepeda with the Office of the CAO. The $8 million basically represents the withhold amounts on the contract.
Explain that for all those.
For each phase of the contract, there's an approximate 10% amount of the contract that is held back and not paid to the contractor until the work is satisfactory, to the city's satisfaction. So in this case, there's a withhold on the CAD part, on the mobile part, on the integration of the two systems and cut over, and on the forms.
Okay. And that's pretty much the entire, what, $60 million was for that, plus what, the two centers? Built the two communication centers?
The $60 million is actually the Northrop Grumman part. The entire Prop M project included the buildout of the two centers and many other items.
So if we have $8 million on the holdbacks, it would leave very little money left for any more amendments?
That's correct.
Okay. And what would you approximate the amount that would be held if there isn't another amendment?
I'm sorry, what?
How much would be left within that $8 million if we were to have to have another amendment?
I think we have all of the money committed for.
Okay.
Provided that the system is expected to cut over and go live in June of this year.
So there's no expectation of general fund money at any time in the future?
That's correct.
Okay. And so the issue is, this is not real money, it's basically money already committed?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
As long as it's not real money, it's okay. No other speakers on that matter. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you all. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item 43 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn back? Not here. Well, keep holding it then.
That would leave only the closed session items.
Can we find out her return time? I know she's on a conference call. Okay, we'll see how long it's going to be before we go into closed session. If we can clear it now. All right, we take a vote on that one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Ten ayes.
Thank you all. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item 43 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn back? Not here. Well, keep holding it then.
That would leave only the closed session items.
Can we find out her return time? I know she's on a conference call. Okay, we'll see how long it's going to be before we go into closed session. If we can clear it now. All right, we take a vote on that one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Ten ayes.
Thank you all. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item 43 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn back? Not here. Well, keep holding it then.
That would leave only the closed session items.
Can we find out her return time? I know she's on a conference call. Okay, we'll see how long it's going to be before we go into closed session. If we can clear it now. All right, we take a vote on that one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Ten ayes.
Thank you all. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item 43 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn back? Not here. Well, keep holding it then.
That would leave only the closed session items.
Can we find out her return time? I know she's on a conference call. Okay, we'll see how long it's going to be before we go into closed session. If we can clear it now. All right, we take a vote on that one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Ten ayes.
Thank you all. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item 43 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn back? Not here. Well, keep holding it then.
That would leave only the closed session items.
Can we find out her return time? I know she's on a conference call. Okay, we'll see how long it's going to be before we go into closed session. If we can clear it now. All right, we take a vote on that one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Ten ayes.
Thank you all. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item 43 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn back? Not here. Well, keep holding it then.
That would leave only the closed session items.
Can we find out her return time? I know she's on a conference call. Okay, we'll see how long it's going to be before we go into closed session. If we can clear it now. All right, we take a vote on that one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Ten ayes.
Thank you all. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item 43 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn back? Not here. Well, keep holding it then.
That would leave only the closed session items.
Can we find out her return time? I know she's on a conference call. Okay, we'll see how long it's going to be before we go into closed session. If we can clear it now. All right, we take a vote on that one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Ten ayes.
Thank you all. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item 43 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn back? Not here. Well, keep holding it then.
That would leave only the closed session items.
Can we find out her return time? I know she's on a conference call. Okay, we'll see how long it's going to be before we go into closed session. If we can clear it now. All right, we take a vote on that one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Ten ayes.
Thank you all. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item 43 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn back? Not here. Well, keep holding it then.
That would leave only the closed session items.
Can we find out her return time? I know she's on a conference call. Okay, we'll see how long it's going to be before we go into closed session. If we can clear it now. All right, we take a vote on that one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Ten ayes.
Thank you all. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item 43 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn back? Not here. Well, keep holding it then.
That would leave only the closed session items.
Can we find out her return time? I know she's on a conference call. Okay, we'll see how long it's going to be before we go into closed session. If we can clear it now. All right, we take a vote on that one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Ten ayes.
Thank you all. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item 43 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn back? Not here. Well, keep holding it then.
That would leave only the closed session items.
Can we find out her return time? I know she's on a conference call. Okay, we'll see how long it's going to be before we go into closed session. If we can clear it now. All right, we take a vote on that one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Ten ayes.
Thank you all. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item 43 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn back? Not here. Well, keep holding it then.
That would leave only the closed session items.
Can we find out her return time? I know she's on a conference call. Okay, we'll see how long it's going to be before we go into closed session. If we can clear it now. All right, we take a vote on that one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Ten ayes.
Thank you all. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item 43 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn back? Not here. Well, keep holding it then.
That would leave only the closed session items.
Can we find out her return time? I know she's on a conference call. Okay, we'll see how long it's going to be before we go into closed session. If we can clear it now. All right, we take a vote on that one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Ten ayes.
Thank you all. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item 43 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn back? Not here. Well, keep holding it then.
That would leave only the closed session items.
Can we find out her return time? I know she's on a conference call. Okay, we'll see how long it's going to be before we go into closed session. If we can clear it now. All right, we take a vote on that one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Ten ayes.
Thank you all. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item 43 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn back? Not here. Well, keep holding it then.
That would leave only the closed session items.
Can we find out her return time? I know she's on a conference call. Okay, we'll see how long it's going to be before we go into closed session. If we can clear it now. All right, we take a vote on that one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Ten ayes.
Thank you all. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item 43 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn back? Not here. Well, keep holding it then.
That would leave only the closed session items.
Can we find out her return time? I know she's on a conference call. Okay, we'll see how long it's going to be before we go into closed session. If we can clear it now. All right, we take a vote on that one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Ten ayes.
Thank you all. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item 43 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn back? Not here. Well, keep holding it then.
That would leave only the closed session items.
Can we find out her return time? I know she's on a conference call. Okay, we'll see how long it's going to be before we go into closed session. If we can clear it now. All right, we take a vote on that one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Ten ayes.
Thank you all. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item 43 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn back? Not here. Well, keep holding it then.
That would leave only the closed session items.
Can we find out her return time? I know she's on a conference call. Okay, we'll see how long it's going to be before we go into closed session. If we can clear it now. All right, we take a vote on that one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Ten ayes.
Thank you all. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item 43 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn back? Not here. Well, keep holding it then.
That would leave only the closed session items.
Can we find out her return time? I know she's on a conference call. Okay, we'll see how long it's going to be before we go into closed session. If we can clear it now. All right, we take a vote on that one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Ten ayes.
Thank you all. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item 43 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn back? Not here. Well, keep holding it then.
That would leave only the closed session items.
Can we find out her return time? I know she's on a conference call. Okay, we'll see how long it's going to be before we go into closed session. If we can clear it now. All right, we take a vote on that one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Ten ayes.
Thank you all. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item 43 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn back? Not here. Well, keep holding it then.
That would leave only the closed session items.
Can we find out her return time? I know she's on a conference call. Okay, we'll see how long it's going to be before we go into closed session. If we can clear it now. All right, we take a vote on that one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Ten ayes.
Thank you all. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item 43 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn back? Not here. Well, keep holding it then.
That would leave only the closed session items.
Can we find out her return time? I know she's on a conference call. Okay, we'll see how long it's going to be before we go into closed session. If we can clear it now. All right, we take a vote on that one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Ten ayes.
Thank you all. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item 43 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn back? Not here. Well, keep holding it then.
That would leave only the closed session items.
Can we find out her return time? I know she's on a conference call. Okay, we'll see how long it's going to be before we go into closed session. If we can clear it now. All right, we take a vote on that one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Ten ayes.
Thank you all. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item 43 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn back?[1695.15]